Good afternoon, everyone. Let's jump in. Tony, would you please call the roll?
Jimenez. Torres. Cohen.
Here.
Ortiz.
Present.
Davis.
Here.
Dohan.
Present.
Candelaus.
Present.
Foley. Batra.
Present.
Kamai. Mahan.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, if you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Today's invocation will be from artist and musician Vivian Tu Naveau, and Councilmember Ortiz will tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. It's bittersweet to end my first month of invocations, though I'm excited to do so in celebration of May being an important month for our Vietnamese-American community. This month, 48 years ago, marks the official admittance of the first group of Vietnamese refugees to the city of San Jose. In honor of that legacy, I want to introduce Vivian Tu Naveau. If Vivian could please make her way down to the floor, who will be performing a musical medley to highlight and express the emotional experience of refugees arriving in the United States and their appreciation for their new community. Vivian is a respected singer who has earned the respect and admiration of the local Vietnamese community and beyond, well-known for her use of her voice for a variety of charitable causes. And in the spirit of the Vietnamese Refugee Heritage Month, I'm also grateful to be joined today by Vietnamese community leaders from District 5 in attendance. Thank you. And Vivian, if you could use that mic right there in the middle. Thank you so much.
Oh, beautiful. For spacious skies. For amber waves of gray. For purple mountain majesties. Above the fruited plain. God shed his grace on thee. And crown thy good with brotherhood. From sea to shining sea. Somewhere over the rainbow. Way up high. There's a land that I've always known. From a lullaby. Somewhere over the rainbow. Skies are blue. And the dreams that you dare to dream really do come true. Thank you very much. I'm very proud to be an American Vietnamese. And I'm very proud to be living here in the United States and especially in the Silicon Valley. I want to thank you, Councilmember Mr. Peter Ortiz, and all the council members for recognizing the Vietnamese Refugee Heritage Month this month. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was very beautiful. We are on to a couple of ceremonial items. Vice Mayor Kamai and Councilmember Candelaus, if you'd join me at the podium, we will recognize and proclaim National Public Works Week.
Good afternoon. My name is Rosemary Kamai. I'm honored to join you all today to celebrate the 2023 National Public Works Week with this year's theme being Connecting the World Through Public Works. We are joined by representatives of frontline staff across all divisions of our Public Works Department. Public Works is one of the largest departments in our city, as you can see, and together they provide critical services across our city, upholding the welfare and well-being of our community. For example, through our city's capital improvement program, they maintain and build, they build and maintain, critical transportation and utility infrastructure. They also support community parks and facilities, as well as the very building we currently stand in, City Hall. And as evidence of their scope of their capabilities, Public Works even cares for the well-being of pets and wild animals. Today is an opportunity to celebrate all the work Public Works does and a chance to take pride in the quality service, unwavering commitment, and remarkable scope of what they accomplish every single day to serve our city and our community. Thank you all again for being here to celebrate this department. Now, I would like to ask my colleague, Councilmember Candelaus, to say a few words.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Public Works Weeks, Public Works Week is a time to recognize the contributions of Public Works professionals who work tirelessly to maintain our community's infrastructure, natural resources, and public services. Public Works professionals play a vital role in ensuring that our communities have safe and reliable bridges, water systems, waste management facilities, and other essential infrastructure, like our animal shelters. Their work often goes unnoticed, which is a good thing. However, their efforts are critical to our daily lives. They keep our community safe and healthy and functioning smoothly. They often work long hours in difficult conditions to ensure that our communities are safe and well-maintained. They are dedicated to serving the public and improving the quality of life for all. Public Works Weeks is an opportunity to thank these essential workers for their hard work and dedication to our communities. It is our pleasure to recognize their contributions and show our appreciation for all that they do. This year marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week. With that, I would like to welcome Acting Director of Public Works, Matt Loesch, to say a few words.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Kamai, Councilmember Candelaus. I am Matt Loesch, Acting Director of Public Works. What a lucky guy I am to support this team. Public Works is a fun department, and we are joined today with some of our colleagues from DOT and ESD because of our shared public work capital responsibilities in San Jose. We are here to celebrate them all. If things go right, as Councilmember Candelaus noted, Public Works services are usually in the background, and that's okay by us. I wanted to share some of our services we provide in addition to the several hundred capital projects, millions of square feet of maintained facilities, and almost 3,000 vehicles. Here are some fun facts about San Jose's Public Works. We maintain the rides at Happy Hollow Zoo. We are building a park with a 20-foot chicken. We have a mailroom with mailing machines. We have a certified materials testing lab, and we've marked over 80,000 utilities in the last year. We are known for getting things done and doing things right. I'm really proud of our team and our efforts to connect our world here in San Jose. So, thank you very much.
With those kittens, it might just have been the cutest ceremonial item we've ever had. Thank you all again for your work. We really appreciate it. Those kittens are so cute. Okay, we are on to Councilmember Batra. Please come on down, and let's recognize and proclaim Azerbaijan Independence Day.
Good afternoon. Today, I would like to declare May 28th as the 105th Azerbaijan's Independence Day, when they became free from Russia. Yesterday, in front of our rotunda, we had the honor of raising their flag when we were joined by their consulate general from LA. It was showcasing our city celebrates culture, diversity, and traditions to allow for all communities to experience and understand one another. The city of San Jose appreciates the contributions of the Azerbaijan and American residents. To the betterment of our city, many who migrated here over the years have become lawyers, business owners, artists, dancers, musicians, and more. The younger generations today are heavily involved in science, technology, contributing to the innovation here in the capital of Silicon Valley, like all other communities. Joining me today to accept the proclamation is Ayton Abasova and Gurdun Mamadova.
Yes.
There was a little bit of a risk in pronouncing those names, but I was coached before I came over here, so. They are from the Azerbaijan House of California, which is a cultural organization, Friendship Center for Azerbaijan Society of California, established in 2022 by the initiative of the individual Azerbaijan professionals, intellectuals, and students living in California. They seek to support fundamental American value by promoting harmony and community with the ultimate respect for diversity and all ethnicities. They had a beautiful opera singer yesterday, whose voice could be heard miles away, if you know, and she is here on a talent visa, and I think we are going to see lots of her performances. I'd like to invite Ayton Abasova and Gurdun to say a word.
Thank you. On behalf of the Azerbaijan House community, stand before you today with a heart filled with gratitude and immense pride. We would like to express our deepest appreciation to Councilmember Arjum Batra and San Jose Mayor Met Mahan for their unwavering support and for gracing us with a remarkable proclamation, marking the Independence Day of Azerbaijan. It's a true honor for us, the Azerbaijani community, to receive this esteemed recognition. This proclamation holds significant meanings, as it symbolizes the unclenchment and celebration of the independence and sovereignty of Azerbaijan. This day holds a special place in the hearts of every Azerbaijani, both between our homeland and throughout the American Azerbaijanis in San Jose City. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, we're on to Orders of the Day. Does anyone on the council have any changes to the printed agenda? Councilmember Cohen?
Sorry, it's my cue. I'm glad I told you in advance.
Yeah.
I would like to request a deferral of Item 3.4 until an August meeting, so that's my proposed change.
Great. All right. And are there any other changes? I believe there are. Okay. Why don't we, well, actually, I'll do the adjournment here, and then we'll vote. Is that the floor? Should we vote first? Public comment. Okay, do public comment, and then do the adjournment, and then vote on Orders of the Day. Okay.
Paul?
Yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. What are you afraid of? What are you afraid of? You're afraid of what's going to come out in this conversation, because it's getting closer and closer to you being discovered, and you're going to have to start acknowledging to some people, because this council answers to some people, and so does La Cardo. He answers to me. We don't, we don't, we don't sit here and state beholden, the laws of this land were never designed to protect people like La Cardo from participating in the types of corruption that he has continually been practicing within the context of that common sense nonprofit. And there's people working for the city right now that are participatory in that corruption. And so, while, while I appreciate the fact that, that, that the mayor went ahead and allowed public comment, because that's the law, I would appreciate it if the council, we need, we need a lawyer to put a check on the city attorney, because the city attorney was never, doesn't function in a democracy to protect criminals like Sam La Cardo or the others that participated within, in city government. What the city's attorney's job is to do is to protect the citizenry, not this organization from being held to account for the laws that it breaks. And this is a felony would happen. It's a felony, and here's why. The city attorney admitted on the record that the law was broken and that it doesn't, that it doesn't align with state law. That means that there's a state law already in place, and the city attorney has openly acknowledged that it was broken. It's not, it's not a faux pas and like a mistake or an oversight. La Cardo broke the law, and the city attorney is trying to do everything she can to protect him by acting ignorant.
Blair?
Hi, Blair Beekman here. I just wanted to thank yourselves for offering public comment on Orders of the Day today, like I've been trying to offer fairly frequently lately. To offer your own discretion on allowing public comment on Orders of the Day, it's a bit dicey. It's a bit questionable. I know you guys like efficiency for the meeting process, but I've been trying to help offer ways that you can offer a schedule and planning and a structure for Orders of the Day and, and closed session reporting and the city manager's reporting to be at one minute of public comment, and to allow that each week is clear direction for all of us to understand the rules of the road of the public meeting process. As Paul said, the Brown Act requires that-
Blair, this is about deferring Item 3.4.
Understood. All right, I'm talking about more broad issues of Orders of the Day process, and you're offering that today. So, thank you for doing that. Just a reminder of what the purpose of Orders of the Day and the public meeting process can be about in our future. I hope we can work on this issue. Thank you.
Back to the council.
Thank you. Okay, so before we vote on Orders of the Day, today's meeting will be adjourned in memory of San Jose Evergreen Community College District Vice Chancellor Jorge Escobar, who passed away on April 16th, 2023. Jorge was a husband, a father, and a community leader who was a committed public servant to our Evergreen community. Councilmember Candelaus will tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. So, today we adjourn in memory of an exceptional individual, Jorge Escobar. For nearly a decade, Jorge dedicated himself to serving our Evergreen community, leaving an indelible mark on the educational landscape of San Jose, serving as Vice President of Administrative Services at San Jose City College, and later as Acting President, and subsequently the San Jose Evergreen Community College School District Vice Chancellor of Administrative Services. Jorge Escobar displayed unwavering dedication and exemplary leadership. His steadfast commitment to advancing the values of opportunity, equity, and social justice made the district and the wider community a better place for all to live, learn, and work. His impact extended beyond his roles within the district. He selflessly served on numerous boards, committees, and organizations. He possessed an ability to bring people together and build strong coalitions through creative problem-solving and innovative thinking, and inspired those around him, moving and propelling the district forward. Jorge's contributions to key committees, councils, task force, programs, and initiatives are too numerous to list comprehensively. From spearheading the launch and oversight of the San Jose Evergreen Community College District Milpitas Extension Site, which expanded the educational services and availability to East San Jose, bringing opportunities to a previously underserved community, to his leadership during the COVID-19 pandemic, which ensured continuity of education while safeguarding the well-being of students and employees. Beyond his professional achievements, Jorge Escobar will be remembered for his kindness, generosity, and infectious sense of humor. Although we bid farewell to a remarkable leader, letters reflect on the legacy of Jorge Escobar. His dedication, compassion, and unwavering commitment to creating a more equitable and inclusive society will continue to inspire us all. We extend our deepest gratitude and sympathy for his wife, Veronica, and two children, Andrea and Diego. We vow to honor his memory by carrying his vision forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Appreciate those really thoughtful comments and tribute. We are on to a vote on Orders of the Day, which includes deferring Item 3.4 to a meeting in August. Oh, did we have a hand up? I apologize. Let's wait. We have a hand up. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, and I apologize if I missed it, but, you know, I think August sort of triggered, because there are timeframes in which for the next election, right? I just want to make sure that there's no consequences by delaying this, where things would change, you know, because there's an election, an earlier election in March of next year. And I was going to ask the city attorney if, you know, the consequence of deferring it to August.
Thank you, Councilmember. I think the item that had the primary concern for the August timeframe was Item 3.5.
Okay. So, but this doesn't have any implications?
Not really.
Okay. Okay. I just, I just wanted to, I just wanted to check and, and understand that. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Vice Mayor. I think we can vote now?
Mayor, could I speak? Could I ask a question?
I think we're voting, but is it an informational question?
It's a question pertaining to 3.4.
Sure.
Okay. Attorney, would it not make a difference in terms of somebody starting a committee or going and working for a nonprofit or something during this time? For an election?
The, the nonprofit, the change for the revolving door will be delayed, but the revolving door that specifically affected campaigns was in Item 3.5. So, 3.4 had more to do with the general city revolving door provisions and some of the changes that had been recommended by the city auditor and had gone through the Board of Fair Campaign and political practices.
Right.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Tony. Okay, we're on to the closed session report.
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have a report out of closed session today.
Thank you, Nora. All right, next is the consent calendar. Are there any items, any members of the council would like to pull from consent? Good. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Do we have public comment?
Blair? Sorry, Blair, that was my fault.
That's okay. Thank you for offering. Yeah, the mute was a little late in arriving. It's here now. Again, hi. Blair Beekman here to comment on Item 2.18, which is a dumpster day, retroactive dumpster day issues. I just wanted to, I've been trying to comment on it recently. I haven't had so much luck as of late, but, you know, to me, the dumpster day process and purpose does a really good, interesting thing for San Jose, and it's been kind of a model for the Bay Area in how to talk about trash issues and bringing together different parts of a neighborhood on a weekend to talk about trash and just to kind of get together. And, and it's been a really, I think, important, good thing that's been happening. And like I said, it's been a model. I've talked about it with people in other cities like Oakland and who are really impressed by it. And, and in being from San Diego now, it's the same thing. They really, like I've been trying to say, they want to work on communication skills with their unhoused, and they're looking to San Jose for these sort of examples that a dumpster day celebration on a Saturday does a really interesting thing for a local neighborhood. So, thanks a lot for its use and purpose and, and its efforts to create good dialogue and trust, all the things we're trying to better understand and need to understand at this time in San Jose. Good luck how these good practices can spread to other parts of the state. And thanks, as always, to the work of Paul Carrera, who I don't think is enough, enough, does not get enough credit in this work, in this life, for the work he tries to do in engaging and bridging homeless to different programs and such. Thank you.
Paul?
Yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. I want to talk about the levying of business taxes downtown. Yesterday, there was an item on, in the Neighborhood Community Economics Development Committee, 750,000, I'm just using this as an example, $750,000 going towards small businesses in the downtown areas. During COVID, there was literally hundreds of millions of dollars that went to businesses to sustain them. And the developers exploited opportunity zones, the concept of opportunity zones. Now, opportunity zones hasn't been discussed enough within the context of city government, and it needs to be, because what's, what opportunity zones were designed to do, and this is during the Trump administration, is that what they, what they were designed to do was to build up areas in the downtown, which Eric Aiden and Dilable have really, really exploited. which Eric Aiden and Dilable have really, really exploited. Because the purpose is this, we're going to go into this area that was like kind of undeveloped, run down. We're going to receive these tax credits on the opportunity zones, and then we're going to build up this area. But you see, the building up of the area is not going to accommodate the very population that opportunity zones were created to accommodate. So, they've already received their tax breaks in terms of the downtown and the developers through the opportunity zones and the fortification of those businesses and the upholding of those businesses through COVID money and the city. So, with that in mind, I think that there should be a bond measure and actually a tax increase because of the facilitation of their businesses through city government and using my tax dollars to do it through tax breaks and tax credits that they actually owe, and they need to start adding to our coffers, not subtracting from them. So, I oppose this, and it needs to be actually a tax increase.
Back to the council.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any hands, so we're ready to vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thanks. Okay, so we are now jumping down to item 8.2, which was agendized to be heard immediately after consent. This is an approval of an issuance of tax-exempt revenue notes for a multifamily housing project. And there's no staff presentation. Do we have a motion? Thank you. Okay, public comment?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. This is Alex Shore, Executive Director of Catalyze SV. Hope you saw our correspondence come in on Friday about this project from Danko Communities. Just wanted to thank the city and the Housing Department, and now you, the council, for hopefully your vote today to continue to move this project forward by investing in affordable housing in our community. It's great to see this project go forward. Our members scored it in June of 2020, I believe, and so it's nice to see it now moving forward further and the city continuing to deepen its investment in affordable housing in our community. So, thanks so much for the support. Great job to Danko Communities. Wanted to note in particular that there will be childcare on-site, a key priority for us in the city, and it's wonderful to see that affordable housing residents and perhaps neighbors around the area will also have access to affordable childcare options right nearby. So, another great project from Danko Communities. Great job, City of San Jose. Thanks.
Okay, I'm going to move to the in-person speakers, then I'll go back to Zoom. Jaime Artega, Kenneth Doe, and Matthew Tinsley. Come down in any particular order. First person in the microphone just starts speaking. Again, that's Matthew Tinsley, Kenneth Doe, and Jaime Artega.
Good afternoon, Mayor Mahan, councilmembers and staff. My name is Matthew Tinsley. I'm Director of the Strong Start Initiative at the Santa Clara County Office of Education. On behalf of the county superintendent of schools, excuse me, Dr. Mary Ann Dewan, we wish to state our support for including an onsite childcare facility in this project. Childcare is one of the most requested resident services and supports a family's workforce participation as well as children's social, emotional, physical, and academic development. As the county's resource and referral agency, the host of the Local Early Education Planning Council, and a provider of childcare to over 2,000 families across the county, we have significant expertise in planning and constructing childcare facilities. We would welcome the opportunity to work with the developer and city staff on ensuring that these and future facilities are designed to support high-quality early learning programs and practices. We look forward to our ongoing partnership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, fellow city councilmembers. My name is Jaime Artega, and I'm a labor compliance investigator for the NorCal Carpenters. I'm here today to speak about misclassification of workers on public works jobs. It's an easy way to cheat taxpayers out of their money by misclassifying the workers. So, one way to misclassify a worker is carpenter wages set by the state on public work jobs is 57.10 an hour, and the laborers is 35.25 an hour. So, the way contractors cheat on that is they, on the certified payroll, they'll state that the carpenters are actually labors. So, they're carpenters, they're doing carpentry work, but they'll classify them as labors. So, right there, there's a difference of 21.85 an hour. If you do that 40 hours a week, that's $874. If you do that for a year, that's like $9,000. If you do that times 10 workers, it's like $90,000. So, that's one way that contractors make money on public works jobs by cheating. There's compliance. Cities have compliance. We do compliance. It's too much, though. We can't be on every job at every moment. You go to these jobs, and they'll tell you, "Yeah, we got our own compliance officers." Yeah, you do, but they're sitting behind a computer somewhere in the middle of nowhere, and the contractors are forwarding the information to them. All they do is submit the data. So, the real compliance is not really happening on public works jobs. There's cheating going on. We have proof. We have evidence, and there's cases against them already. Different contractors, I'm not going to state names. I'm not going to get into that right now. But my email is, do you have my email? If ever you guys want to walk a public works job with me in the City of San Jose, I'm more than willing to walk it with you so you can see the conditions and what's going on.
Thank you. Two.
Yeah, and just to clarify, it really needs to be about this item we're voting on, so I appreciate the comments and certainly happy to follow up. But we're right now on item 8.2.
Okay, good afternoon, Mayor, councilmember. My name is Kenneth Doe. I'm a field rep for the Carpenters 405 here in San Jose. We represent about 6,000 members in Santa Clara County and 38,000 in Northern California. I'm also a proud member of District 6. I'm very active in the community and our church. And I'm encouraged by the idea of bringing more development like this to our community, because face it, we need more homes than ever. But a project of this size and scope should have labor standard placed. I applied for the secured measure of Finance A or Measure A. So, this is a prevailing wage job, public works job. So, this is set on our salary. Why not use the, you know, the carpenters, the master craft? I don't understand that. Developing and contractors routinely import out-of-the-air or out-of-state workforce. This perpetuous cycle undercuts the wage of local workers and exploits workers recruited from afar and allows for the continued underinvestment in the much-deadened apprenticeship program that would benefit the community. Labor standard would give us a livable wage with medical and retirement benefits to allow workers and the families to live in the community they work in. This also means those wages will be reinvested back to the local community. Their tax dollars will help fund local schools and government. Labor standard would help with local hire, which will be great for the community. I heard another speaker plotting about what Danko is doing, about how this is helping the community, and it's nothing but the truth. You know, developer and contractor should be held to do the right thing and pay error standard with your leadership. We could send a message to all developers and contractors of San Jose by adopting labor standard language. It would safeguard the working class, men and women of our beautiful and diverse city. Thank you.
Going back to Zoom, Paul?
Yes, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. Thank you for the comments that have just recently happened. There's a lot of this corruption that's been going on in the city, and there's a legal, there's a historical precedent for it. It happened around the Center for Performing Arts when the Model Cities money started coming in, and they weren't hiring no Chicanos at all. None, zero. There was no Mexicans on the project that built the Center for Performing Arts. And that's what coalesced around Confederación de la Raza Unida. So, there's a historical precedent for this kind of, just kind of like, "No, we're not going to keep this money in San Jose. We're just going to contract it all out, and then that money goes someplace else." And then you sit here and you talk a good one with a smile on your face, like you really care and you're concerned about the citizens of this community. But I would ask the señores that went to the podium, please put your, please put what you stated into the public record. You can send it to the city clerk, and they'll submit it into the public record so that I can, so that I can use that as talking points. Because this is going to be, you're using a tax credit, but you're not benefiting the community. The only ones that are benefiting from these tax credits are the developers. And I'm sick and tired of, like, almost like there's certain people on this council that are basically spokespeople for the, it's like they're contracted by the developers, like, "We're sitting here and beholden to them. No, you don't want to do business here? Get out of here. Get out of here. Get out of my city. Quit corrupting the democratic process and start hiring locals." Matter of fact, I want a resolution written that is going to demand, not ask, demand that 60%, 60% of the workforce there on any kind of prevailing wage contract, that we have local people, local. You show your ID, it shows that you're connected to San Jose, you're hired. 60%, because that money needs to stay here, because you're using these systems in order to corrupt the very system. And it's-
Hi, Blair Beekman here. Really interesting public comment, I feel, I felt, to help prepare for the future of this item. Thank you. It makes my own public comment feel like kind of a bit shallow and insipid in comparison, but yet onward, I will persevere and try to offer my own small ideas to help a real larger process we're all trying to understand and work towards together. It's my feeling with this West San Carlos project that West San Carlos is a really interesting area around ideas of how we can understand the future of mixed-income housing. And this project seems like it lends itself to those kind of concepts for our future. A real good luck in how mixed income can fit in well to West San Carlos projects and how we'll be planning mixed-income ideas in our future that is coming up soon, that we have to really be working on these ideas in the future. Mixed income is, you know, where people of low income and high income can live together more harmoniously, and it's a better understanding. That means cooperation from ourselves. That means understanding, and I think it's an interesting feature we have planned, a reminder of its good work. And again, West San Carlos seems a good place to start such good practices. Thank you.
Thank you. I was in favor of affordable housing in San Jose. And multifamily is definitely the way it goes. I've always lived on my own until I moved into an apartment, and it's actually a rather nice way to live, actually, depending on the neighbors, but great neighbors. The reason I'm in that, but there's been several indications that there might be some stuff that's below board, and I think a lot of that just gets blown away. And as citizens, we should have a right to say something. I personally don't believe anything we say makes any difference at all. And maybe that is probably just me, or partially me, thinking that way, but it makes it hard to have these discussions when you feel like any emails, any letters, any phone calls, any public comment, it's futile at best to try to bring some of this stuff forward. And we would like a way to communicate where we actually are heard, and that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Back to the council.
Great. Thank you, Tony. Let's start with Vice Mayor McMahon.
Thank you. I do support this project, and I am going to be in favor of the motion. The one thing that I think concerns me is what was brought up by the Carpenters, if in fact, these things are happening. And I just, you know, as strongly as I feel about wage theft, and I know we've, this council has supported, you know, sort of the wage theft policy. I see that as potential wage theft if you're not being compensated appropriately. So, I just feel that we need to really take a look at this and ensure that wage theft is not happening, because that's what I feel that it is happening if it in fact is being diverted because of a different classification. So, as, you know, the city manager takes a look at this, that's something that I'm hoping that we also take into consideration. Thank you.
I'm asking our Acting Public Works Director, Matt Lesch, to come down and respond.
Good afternoon, Matt Lesch, Acting Public Works Director. I got Mr. Ortego's card. We are going to have our staff reach out to him this afternoon and get some details specifically of the information that he has around public works projects and wage theft. We'll get to the bottom of it.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, great. Counselor Batra?
I'll be supporting this project, but I wanted to highlight something. Last Tuesday, when the, another project was brought up here and Housing Department did a presentation, I asked specifically that each one of these projects, when it comes up here, we need a context to the overall work we are doing towards affordable homes. And I requested that we get an attachment to every one of these projects showing the total scope of the NOFA, the amount of projects we have committed, the amount of money we have committed, how many rooms and houses we're getting. So, I'm happy to acknowledge that that request has been totally fulfilled. This supplemental memo gives exactly the details we were looking for. And on one piece of paper, we can see that our NOFA has funded 692 units we are going to get, the total amount of money we have committed to it, and the status of those projects. So, we are, for a public and for us, it's a very informative piece of work. And we requested it last week, and as of today, we have that on our hand. Thanks to the Housing Department for doing this excellent work and giving us the information we need to make these decisions on. Thank you.
Thanks, councilmember. I did want to just ask if, I don't know if we have anyone in the room who can speak to this, maybe Reagan. I was doing the quick math. It doesn't appear to me that the cost per room is accurate, at least on the all-in cost, and I was curious if we're only counting certain dollars there? Is that just the cost in city money?
Oh, it's on. Good afternoon. The cost per room is, seems different because that's calculated based on the total number of people that these developments can accommodate, because we have two- and three-bedroom units. So, two-bedroom, there'd be two people taking it. Three-bedroom, three people. So, if you look at the total number of people a development can house, and you divide the development costs by that, that you get your cost per room.
I see.
So, I think it'd be probably good in the future, and I know we're going to attach these, and thank you for acknowledging that, councilmember, that they, that staff got the supplemental out. It'd be great to put a footnote on that just because I think it's probably not intuitive to the reader. And I really appreciate staff getting this out within the timeframe for this meeting.
Yeah, or a column for cost per unit, if we want to think of it. Yeah, just so we can have both lenses.
Okay.
Would be helpful. Thank you. Okay, great. Councilmember Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a quick question. Does our wage theft ordinance, does that also apply to developments in relation to projects that may receive city dollars for affordable housing? Is there anybody that could answer that?
Thank you.
We'll have Matt come back down.
Sorry. No worries. Your question again?
So, essentially, the city has a wage theft ordinance, right? Which essentially disqualifies contractors who've, you know, done wage theft issues, violations in the past. Does that wage theft ordinance extend to projects around affordable housing that the city may be giving money to and who they're doing business with?
That's a great question. So, again, Matt Lesch, Acting Public Works Director. The way I understand this is not to procure a particular contractor, which our wage theft policy is about procuring services, and it's that gate, our policy is what gates getting contractors in or dealing with contractors when they are city contractors in our projects. I'm gonna verify this for sure and get back to you. That's okay.
So if we're giving money to a developer or organization that's gonna build housing, if we, they do business with a less than reputable organization, our laws technically aren't applied to that organization? Because it's like, we're like, there's a middle person?
Just to be clear, I don't think that's what I said. And I'm trying, I certainly wouldn't mean that if that's what you're taking from what I said.
No, 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 I just wanted, it's, I guess, a more clarification for me to understand.
So I'll be, I'll be abundantly clear when I return to you with it. Because I just don't know for certain, I wouldn't want to misspeak. I would believe, so our wage theft policy is a gating function of bringing, when we bring contractors in to do our work?
Mm-hmm.
Or when they are contractors on our public projects now, or public services and, and procurements. I'm gonna verify with this because this is unique to me. I'll get back to you, so that's okay.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. Because I, I think public dollars is extremely, you know, how public dollars are extremely important, how they're used. And I want to make sure that we're not, you know, essentially funneling dollars to any companies that are, you know, doing human right violations or wage violations or anything like that.
I understand specifically now, thank you.
Um, okay, thank you. It's just, you know, really important to me that we look into this and hope, I guess we could have future conversations on how to make sure that situations like this, with us giving money to a specific developer or to a specific project, making sure that those dollars aren't being shifted towards an organization that could be using the dollars in the wrong way. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Nora, did you want to chime in?
Yes, thank you, council member. Um, it's my understanding that this is not going through a procurement process. Um, so this is not really a, a public works project in that sense that the city is building it. Um, but there is still enforcement of prevailing wage separate from um, wage theft in our, in our procurement processes. And we can um, provide the council with a memo to explain both of those. And if you want us to, to look further at wage protections, we can then do that.
Yeah, I understand the difference of how it would be if we were procuring with a specific agency, but I think people could still, you know, track it back to the city if there's problems on the work side, if there's issues with how the work, the, the organization's paying workers or, you know, violating any sort of laws. We're still on the hook of funding that project. And people are gonna say, look, this is what the city's doing with your tax dollars. So I just want to make sure we're extremely mindful of that. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. So we will write that up for you. And then if there's direction, a further direction from council, we can look at that.
Great. Thank you. Councilor Dawn?
Thank you, Mayor. This is much-needed housing, affordable housing that we need in our city. And uh, I and my colleagues do believe in absolutely put a squash to wage theft. And thank you, Public Works, for looking into it. And I will be supporting this motion as well. Thank you.
Thank you, council member, and agreed. Okay. I saw Chris Hickey just came down. I, I don't know if you want to weigh in or, or if we should come back offline as you get more information. Now's your chance, if you do want to.
So, Chris Hickey, our Office of Equality Assurance. Could you answer your specific question again to make sure Chris can answer it? If you would, please, I'm sorry.
Um, all right. I think my, my initial question was, since we have a wage theft ordinance here at the City of San Jose, does that also apply to projects that aren't necessarily being oversighted by the city? It's like, it's not us doing the procurement, but us funding the project through affordable housing dollars. Does that wage theft ordinance still apply to contractors, outside contractors, who may not be doing business with the city, but are doing business with city money?
Thank you, council member, Chris Hickey, Public Works Department. The wage theft policy would not oversee this specific project. However, my office still oversees prevailing wage requirements on the project. So all workers would be reviewed under the prevailing wage to ensure on this specific project that all companies, the general contractor and any subcontractors would be required to pay prevailing wages and all workers would receive that specific dollar amount for this specific project. But the wage theft policy itself would not mandatorily disqualify any of these contractors from working on this type of project.
Do you, is there any sort of influence or authority or insight that we get into these projects outside of just prevailing wage? As, you know, if there are issues in the workplace, people are gonna say this is a city-funded project, there could be some liability. So I'm just trying to understand, where does the line end for our, our sort of insight or authority?
That's a very good question, council member. I'd have to do a little bit more research and background, but I would be able to say, our staff, Public Works, Office of Equality Assurance staff will ensure that wages are paid appropriately on this specific project. If historically a company, somebody were to bring a judgment to us, that's something I still have to research. The wage theft policy is rather new to us, but I, I can follow up offline with yours.
But as, final question, but as of now, an organization that has wage theft claims, that has violations, technically, they could get work from city dollars through this process of affordable housing funding?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. All right, that, that, that could be an issue, but thank you. We could talk about that later.
Thank you, council mayor.
Thanks, council member. Okay. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. All right, we are back up to item 3.1, Report of the City Manager.
Um, thank you, Mayor, I have no report today.
All right. Item 3.3, 2022 Biannual Ethics Review, and we have a short presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members and members of the public. My name is Sarah Sarate. I am the Director of the Office of Administration, Policy and Intergovernmental Relations, joined by Rosa Sangtutari, Chief Deputy City Attorney, and Edwin Huertas, the Open Government Manager. Today, we're here to discuss recommendations made by former Mayor Sam Liccardo as part of the Biannual Ethics Review. The Biannual Ethics Review is a requirement outlined in Section 607 of the San Jose City Charter, where the mayor is tasked with reviewing the city's code of ethics and making any recommended amendments or changes. Mayor Liccardo submitted his review at the end of his term and his recommendations can be categorized into two buckets, PRAs and the Brown Act. Regarding PRAs, three recommendations were made to better facilitate PRA processing in a matter that, one, addresses the growing number of PRAs, two, that identifies voluntary protocols that requesters could employ to reduce burden on staff and ensure a more expedient and efficient process, and three, which explore amendments to city policies to address increasing number of digital records. There was also a recommendation to explore state action to curtail abuse of well-intentioned PRA requirements. Regarding the Brown Act, the City Attorney's Office was directed to clarify the city's interpretation of the law. And now I'll hand it over to Edwin to talk a little bit about our recommendations and actions that we've taken.
Good afternoon. Thanks. Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is Edwin Huertas, Open Government Manager for the City of San Jose. Uh, regarding Mayor Liccardo's first recommendation, city staff are already implementing a three-pronged approach to modernize the city's PRA process and to integrate a technology solution. Through an RFP process, GovQA was awarded a contract in late 2021 and the system went live in October, I'm sorry, August 2022. While the platform does not reduce the volume of PRAs or staff time related to the production or redaction of records, it does make for the overall coordination of PRAs much more efficient. Since going live, we continue to encourage feedback, which we use to ensure continuous improvements. Continuous improvements. Including that requests are routed to the best point of departmental entry to assess requests that are going to the correct records holders and to designate, or and to design communication templates for GovQA. We're also using this implementation and learning period to inform any necessary updates to city policy. For example, if anything is outdated, but no policy changes have been made. So this is a, this is a screenshot of what requesters see when they get to the City of San Jose's new GovQA Record Center. Requesters can create an account, input what records they are requesting from what department, and the request is routed off to the responsible department for processing. This slide right here is meant to provide a simplified overview of what's happening as we process PRAs. While we encourage that requests go through GovQA, we still handle requests that come in via email, phone call, letters, et cetera, which staff enter into our system for tracking purposes. Depending on the PRA language, the request can go in three different directions. The majority of the PRAs that we receive are either single departmental, uh, which are coordinated by the department itself, or multi-departmental, uh, which I myself will coordinate. Any PRA related to the mayor's office or council will take that third path, which is processed by the clerk's office. Importantly, we have to note that while GovQA handles the PRA submission and acknowledgement of the requester, city staff still handle the majority of the processing, which includes communicating with the requester, the search and collection of responsive records, and so on. With this last step right here, the final production of records is delivered to the requester through GovQA. The second recommendation recommended identifying voluntary protocols to focus the scope of requests. As part of normal processing, PRA coordinators regularly communicate with the requesters to better understand the parameters of each request. And when possible and appropriate, will redirect requesters to city records depositories so requesters can find records on their own more efficiently. In addition, we are in the process of updating our webpages, both the City Public Records page and the GovQA Record Center page, to reflect voluntary instructions requesters can use to help hone in on the records they are seeking. This essentially includes key questions requesters can ask themselves when formulating their request.
Thank you, Edwin. This was his first presentation. I'll take over from here. Um, in addition to the voluntary protocols that the mayor, the mayor also recommended considering legislative advocacy in concert with other stakeholder groups to enable mechanisms that could curtail abuse of well-intentioned PRA requirements. As noted in the memo, advocating for changes to the California Public Records Act is not currently included in the city council-adopted legislative priorities that guide the IGR team's core advocacy work. The city council could take action to make this a legislative priority for the next legislative session. However, I will note for you that there isn't much appetite in Sacramento for this sort of change. It would likely be perceived by the public as an attempt to reduce public transparency and access to public records. Lastly, with regard to the third recommendation, my team is currently working to address audit recommendations that intersect with electronic records by taking a systematic approach to understanding the types of electronic records. Different departments oversee and maintain. We hope to complete this work in 2023. I'll now turn it over to Rosa to speak to the Brown Act recommendation as well as the recommended ordinance amendment to clarify the appeal process for PRAs.
Sure. Rosa Sangtutari with the City Attorney's Office. As part of the Brown Act clarification on the law, we intend to provide some advice following this meeting with respect to the clarification request. As for the proposed ordinance, while it's not strictly part of the Biannual Ethics Review, it was a referral from the Rules Committee. It arose out of an appeal of records requests that related to attorney-client privilege. And that appeal went through the Board of Campaign and Fair Political Practices as well as a Rules Committee. Since the attorney-client privilege is held by counsel, it did not make sense that these types of records would not go straight to counsel. And so the proposed ordinance would allow for an appeal for these types of records to come straight to counsel. The secondary issue that the proposed ordinance would deal with is a referral from the board. After that process, they believed that the Public Records Act appeal was not an appropriate subject for them since their expertise really surrounds election matters. So they requested that they be removed as a body for appeal. And so the proposed ordinance would also do that. Happy to answer any questions.
I'm gonna, if I don't mind piping in, Edwin, you really rocked it. Good job.
I was gonna say the same thing. Well done, Edwin. Awesome, thank you for the presentation. Let's go to public comment first.
Paul, followed by Blair.
Uh, yes, Paul Sutter from the horseshoe. Thank you to the SPG.
Where did he go? Paul, we've lost your audio. I'm gonna move on to Blair. Paul just dropped off. Um, Blair?
All right, hopefully Paul's voice, Paul can come back. Um, for myself, um, this to me is a fairly contentious issue. I hope there can be more public comment besides myself on this issue today. I know a lot of people have been working on this issue a lot. I'm still at step one when you guys are already at step five or step 12. So um, not a lot I can really say about it. Uh, but I, boy, I'm a bit worried about it. And um, I hope it is progressing in decent terms. Uh, that, you know, it's the sort of issue that I think just decent, regular people grow miffed when people want to change these sort of things. There are things that can be changed, updated and improved. And when those people start doing that, it's just, it gets into a fussy, mushy mess. And uh, good luck that you are working it out and understanding, I guess, good new systems for ourselves that are better updated and coordinated. But uh, I, it just, there's that feeling of the mayor, former mayor, is, wants to get even with people, basically. And it hurts. And um, I think we already have some pretty good standards with these PRA things that necessarily don't have to be fiddled with. Good luck how to keep the process good for everyone and open and clear and not more and more difficult for people to participate. Thank you.
Back to council.
Great, thank you, Tony. Uh, Councilor Cohen?
Yeah, thank you for the report. And um, I just have a question. I, there was the element about the question, about the Brown Act, and I didn't quite catch what, whether there was a recommendation or thought about the application of the Brown Act in your report.
We do intend to provide a more thorough memo to the council following this meeting.
Okay, so we're just waiting. All right, I, I just wanted to say, just make a comment about it. And I know I've talked to Nora about this a number of times over the, over the course of the last couple of years. You know, how we apply the Brown Act versus, you know, what the spirit of the Brown Act is, I think there's some, you know, there, I think we're extra cautious, which I know we do for, for good reasons. But um, I think it's important for us to always periodically, to always reevaluate, you know, what our restrictions are as council members and how we make good policy. Because in my opinion, good policy is made by being able to work with somebody, with a group under the confines of the Brown Act, come to council, have a public discussion, and then potentially gather with a different group because we've finished that. But we often carry these Brown Acts ad nauseam and end up- and end up not being able to collaborate with various stakeholders over time. And so I just want us to think, and I think it's an important discussion for us to have, for us to have even as a council at some point, about how we think it can work, what, what the constraints should be, and how we might be more effective. So I don't want us to always just keep doing it the way we have because it's a tradition. I want to make sure we're following the rules, but we're given the flexibility we need to do good policy. So I just wanted to give that input.
Thank you, council member. The direction on the biennial review was to provide advice to the council on that subject. So the memo does contain a brief paragraph or two on what the law is on the Brown Act. And we do have an advice memo to the council that would be a privileged attorney-client legal advice memo, like we often provide. And that is being finished up and will be coming to council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, council member. Counselor Batra?
I think my question is in line with what Councilmember David Cohen asked for. It's really three aspects to the Brown Act. And maybe your memo is going to cover, but I want to make sure that it is. In order for us to be able to be fully compliant with Brown Act, there are three aspects to it. The life of the Brown Act, scope of the Brown Act, and the third is keeping track of who are members of the Brown Act. And today, scope, like Councilmember said, we may be sometime taking the scope to be too large. Like, I would pick on one where I found it to be too large. It's like interim housing. It seems to have so many facets. But it seems like because it was brought in to the council, that item is considered that the, oh, nothing about the interim housing can be talked with anybody other than those people who were in the memo. I think we want to look at that very carefully, to define what the scope should be. And then similarly, the life of it. Is it the life of the council members who continue to be here is the life of it? Or is it some sunsetting time on those things so the new Brown Acts can be formed? The third one is, Brown Act is being kept tracked by each one of the council member's staff. I would prefer to have that be in the city clerk's office as central database, which is accessible to all of us. And so that we can, once a Brown Act exists, we can find out which Brown Act is what group. So those would be three requests, whatever you want to call them. Well, I'd like to get that addressed so that we can stay fully compliant with the Brown Act, its intentions, and its requirements.
Thank you, Councilmember Batra. We do have thoughts about council's compliance with the Brown Act. And the issue on, and the clerk would obviously have to involve a discussion with the clerk also. I don't know how much staff she has for something like that, but that is not covered by us, but we can have further discussion about it. Thank you.
A shared Excel worksheet that everybody has access to is one thing, but I would definitely need to work with the attorney's office because I feel like there's like this legal overlap. So it is something that we can work on with the attorney's office and see what we can do for you.
I do appreciate that because it will, it will help us a lot in terms of being able to keep track of things and compliance.
Yeah, a shared worksheet's like no work. We could do that. But if you're, if we're supposed to be like actively tracking, that's, that's something different.
Whatever you can come up, it's going to be better than what we got today.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other hands? Don't believe we've had a motion yet. Anyone like to make one?
A move approval.
Second. Thank you. All right. Let's vote. Okay. Great. Thank you all. Thank you again to staff for the presentation. Now, we've decided to defer item 3.4, so we are on to item 3.5, which is a proposed ordinance, and we have a short staff presentation.
Good afternoon again. Rosa Santatari with the City Attorney's Office. This is item 3.5. We were directed by council to return with amendments to Title 12. Just by way of background, the city has been regulating contribution amounts and a time period that candidates may receive contributions since the 1980 and 1989 respectively. What gave rise to this referral was a request to look into the applicability of Title 12 as to the activities of common good Silicon Valley. And it was determined by the board that the activities were not regulated by Title 12 because the term candidate in Title 12 did not cover elected officers. So the Rules Committee referred, made a request to our office to revise Title 12 to address the following four bullet points. One is to align the definition with the Political Reform Act of candidate to include elected officers. And that would waterfall into the application of control committees in the campaign contributions under Title 12. And also seek clarification as to candidate control committees making independent expenditures, whether they're subject to the contribution limits and time period restrictions. And lastly, to amend the revolving door policy to prohibit former city officials from working with independent expenditure committees. With respect to the first three, we have proposed revisions to the definition of candidate. But as for the last bullet, we don't recommend amending because to do so could infringe on First Amendment right to free speech. The actual revisions you will see here are highlighted in yellow. And this is a change to definition to the candidate so that it matches the state definition, which would carry it through the elected officers and the end of their term. And that would subject then if an elected officer had a candidate control committee to the contribution limits and the time periods for receipt of contributions. So these are the effect of the proposed revisions, as I indicated. What it does not do is it does not prohibit a candidate or their control committee from making independent expenditures or contributions to independent expenditure committees. It also does not regulate where the sole objective is the passage or defeat of a ballot measure. And we have never regulated that under Title 12. That is it, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you, Rosa. Appreciate it. Let's go to public comment first.
Lucila Ortiz, followed by LWV Bay Area.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Lucila Ortiz. I'm the political director with Working Partnerships USA. And I am speaking in support of the memo by councilmembers Cohen, Jimenez, Davis, Candela, and Foley to strengthen our local democracy and protect City Hall from the corrupting influence of big money. As you know, in the 2022 elections, we saw a political action committee run by former Mayor Licardo and his chief of staff, Jim Reed, who collected around $1.5 million raised in sums well beyond what's allowed for San Jose elected officials to raise by our local elections laws and spend it to influence the elections for the mayor and city council districts three and seven. This includes over 200,000 raised from executives of Legacy Partners, a firm that is founded by Mayor Mahan's uncle and one of San Jose's largest landlords. San Jose has been a leader in ensuring fairness in our elections and having strong campaign finance laws. But Mayor Licardo and Jim Reed found and abused this loophole despite the State's Fair Political Practices Commission warning them about the potential conflicts with the state election code. So now, Jim Reed serves as the chief of staff to our current mayor, who benefited from this fundraising practice and is guiding decisions on important policy issues connected to those wealthy donors, raising a number of ethics concern within City Hall. We believe that the proposal from the city attorney and the memo from these council members would close a loophole in our municipal code that allowed this pact to be created and help to eliminate the appearance of potential corruption at City Hall by stopping future unlimited fundraising by city officials. So by amending this ordinance, to be specific that it applies to staff of elected city office holders, we can have greater certainty that we will be able to be more effectively enforce this provision in the future. Thank you for your time.
LWV Bay Area, followed by John Tucker.
Thank you. I'm Roma Dawson, speaking as an individual today and as a District One resident. And I'm in strong support of the memo authored by Councilmembers Jimenez, Cohen, Davis, Candela, and Foley. And I particularly draw your attention to number two in their recommendation to include staff members as agents. I hope this is the beginning of a conversation about campaign finance reform and not the end. I will note that I had the privilege of being a fundraiser for the campaign of Mayor Tom McHenry. And as council member, he introduced the first campaign limitation of $500. And that was to prevent a group of a few very wealthy white men sitting in a room and deciding who the next mayor would be. And I'm a little concerned we may be returning back to those bad old days. I also had the privilege of working on Mayor Susan Hammer's campaign, her campaign for mayor, and it was the first million-dollar campaign raised $500 at a time. Until we do everything within our power in the City of San Jose to limit the influence of wealthy individuals, we will not have a true democracy in the City of San Jose. I commend you for this action and again urge you to look at what neighboring cities, Oakland, for example, and other cities have done to further restrict abuse of big money in politics. Thank you so much.
John Tucker, followed by Paul.
Hi, John Tucker, speaking on behalf of MEF and also the entirety of APSME Local 101, which represents over 4,500 public and private workers in the South Bay. APSME asks that you support the memo by councilmembers Candela, Davis, Foley, Cohen, Jimenez, to strengthen our local democracy and protect City Hall from the moneyed interests and those that would seek to use public funds to line the pockets of the very few and the very wealthy. In the last election, we watched former Mayor Licardo and his chief of staff, Jim Reed, raise almost one and a half million to spend and influence elections for mayor and council. And so instead of being limited to raise no more than 1,400 for elections for mayor or 700 for city council races, their PAC could seek unlimited contributions from our city's largest city contractors, including but not limited to California Waste Solutions, who gave $10,000, which continues to do business with the City of San Jose and a provider of residential recycling in lieu of public servants. And also Green Waste Recovery, Inc., and its subsidiary, Zanker Road Resource Management, who also gave $10,000 and continues to do business with the City of San Jose as a provider of residential waste management and of course received Mayor Licardo's support on a vote to amend its current contract on April 20th, 2021. So I guess bully for Jim Reed, who created and abused this loophole to get his candidate elected and keep his own job in the process, mind you, despite the state's FPPC warning him about running afoul with the state election code. The proposal from the city attorney and the memo from these council members would close the loophole in our municipal code that allowed this pact to be created and help eliminate the perception and reality of potential corruption of City Hall by stopping future unlimited fundraising by city officials. Thank you.
Paul, followed by Andrea.
Yes, Paul Sotomayor from the horseshoe. It's okay when something stinks. It's okay to say that it smells. But when something stinks and you continue to have a smile on your face and you call it roses and, and sit there and say, oh, I don't know. What are you talking about? Come on, man. Those things are over. You can't con us. Now, what Licardo did is corrupted the entire system because he's a lawyer. And wow, I did not know that the mayor's uncle is one of the largest landowners in the city. That is interesting. That is an interesting fact. And the other thing is that Licardo needs to be referred. I would like an amendment to this proposed ordinance. And he needs to be referred to the Santa Clara County Civil Grand Jury. There's too much lying and too much corruption. The man needs to be arrested. He needs to be arrested, and he needs to know what it's like to have cops come after. Because this man is a thief. He's a criminal. And he deserves criminal prosecution for the criminal acts that he's committed here. This is not in alignment with state law. The, it's very, very clear. I stated it earlier in my comments. It is not in alignment with quote-unquote "state law." What happens to people that break the law? They are called criminals. But what we do is we afford certain people in our community, Licardo and Reed, namely, to get away with breaking the law. And the laws only apply criminally to the people of the lower classes that cannot defend themselves nor have friends like Mahan that are the mayor of our city. So I would suggest that also, maybe the mayor needs to be considered for civil prosecution at the civil grand jury level because of his participation and beneficiary of this corruption.
Andrea, followed by Bee.
Hello, council members. My name is Andrea Portillon. I'm the Community Organizing and Policy Director with Somos Mayfair. I'm here to urge you to please support the memo by councilmembers Cohen, Jimenez, Davis, Candela, and Foley to strengthen our local democracy and protect City Hall from the corrupting influence of big money. The last elections, we saw a political action committee run by former Mayor Licardo and his staff, chief of staff, Jim Reed, to collect around $1.5 million raised in sums well beyond what's allowed for San Jose's elected officials to raise by our local election laws and spend it to influence elections for mayor and city council districts three and seven. Instead of being limited to raise no more than 1,400 for elections for mayor or 700 for city council, their PAC could seek unlimited contributions from our city's largest corporate landlords, developers, city contractors.
Andrea, we lost your audio.
$200,000 raised from executives of Legacy Partners, a firm founded by Mayor Mahan's uncle and one of San Jose's largest landlords. San Jose has always been a leader in ensuring fairness in our elections and having strong campaign finance laws. But Mayor Licardo and Jim Reed found and abused this loophole despite the State's Fair Political Practices Commission warning them about potential conflicts with the state election code. The proposal from the city attorney and the memo from these council members would close a loophole in our municipal code and allow that this pact to be created to help to eliminate the appearance of potential corruption at City Hall by stopping future unlimited fundraising by city officials. By amending the ordinance, to be specific, that it applies to staff or city or elected city office holders, we can have greater certainty that we will be able to more effectively enforce this provision in the future. Thank you.
Bee, followed by Roxanne.
Good afternoon. My name is Bea Perminen. I'm a deputy director at Asian Law Alliance. We support the memo by councilmembers Cohen, Jimenez, Davis, Candela, and Foley. We also support the proposal from the city attorney that would close the loophole in our municipal code that allowed a previous political action committee to be created. And the proposal would also help to eliminate the appearance of potential corruption at City Hall by stopping future unlimited fundraising by city officials. Thank you.
Roxanne?
Thank you. My name is Roxanne. I'm founder of Transwomen for Trans Women, and I'm strongly in support- I'm founder of Trans Women for Trans Women, and I'm strongly in support of closing this loophole. I am a resident and a landowner in District Three, and my two prior representatives on this council, in my opinion, have been transphobic, and they use that power to deny my community housing. I'm a landowner and willing to be the general contractor to provide housing, and this city council refuses to allow trans women to have housing in this city. And the big developers downtown dictate who our representatives are. Omar is the first one that's broken through that corporate shield. And so I'm asking you to pass this. I'm also asking you to stand up for trans women. I mean, the city of San Jose is so transphobic that you put a chief in that has questions, you don't even listen to our community, and you won't even repeal the ordinance that's still on the books that says no person shall appear in public wearing the dress not assigned to their sex. And you've never, ever hired a trans woman, ever, in the city of San Jose? If that's not straight-up bigotry, how do you define bigotry?
Back to the council.
All right. Thank you. Let's go to Councilor Cohen.
Yeah, thank you. And I appreciate all the work that Attorney's Office has done on this update on the policy. I think it's an important one. I, you know, as there's more and more restrictions that we actually put on ourselves as council members and candidates for office in San Jose, we've seen that the influence of independent expenditures grow, and that's been frustrating to many of us, I think. And, you know, we won't really have much we can do about outside independent expenditures, but it, to have independent expenditures that are originating inside the building is an extra level of frustration, I think, for some of us as well. So I think it's important for us to close the loopholes. And I do have one question before I make a motion. On slide, on page four of your presentation, it talks about what the definition of candidate is, and I thought I had understood that we were making the definition of candidate include agents of candidates, which would be their staff members, but I don't, I guess I don't see where that is actually is in this ordinance.
So the proposed revisions only deals with redefining candidate. There is a separate definition of agent under section 12.06.220 that covers staff tied to campaign or had a role in the campaign. But if the council desires to expand it to staff of an elected official holding office, we would need to amend that section to clarify that. That section existed pre-proposed ordinance today, and so that would need to be updated to cover the expansion of the staff of an elected officer.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification, and that is why we put number two in the memo, but it wasn't clear to us exactly whether we needed it or not, so I wanted to find out. So I appreciate that, and we do have the interest of making sure that it includes council staff as in addition to campaign staff for candidates. Given this, these recommendations, we can come back with an urgency ordinance in June, right, to make sure that this is, will meet the timing to be effective by August?
With respect to recommendation one and two in redefining agent, yes. So the posting requirements would be by June 3rd for a first reading on the 13th and a second reading on the 27th with an effective date of 30 days following that.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. And our recommendation number three is more of an exploration for future direction and not, not one for this particular ordinance anyway. So I will go ahead and move the memo that I authored with Councilmember Jimenez, Davis, Candelas, and Foley. Second.
Councilmember, there's a problem with that timing because we don't have a council meeting on the 27th.
I heard that, but I did hear that, and I was going to bring that up. We don't have a meeting on the 27th, although we left the 27th open as a possibility to do a meeting if we need one. In my, in my opinion, this is important enough to make sure we have a meeting on the 27th unless, if we can't meet the timing of the 20th, but.
Is there a way to do a turnaround of one week on this?
We routinely do one-week turnarounds.
So we can, then we can have it heard on the 20th.
I'm pretty sure almost all ordinances going on the 13th will have a one-week turnaround to the 20th. That's typically what we do in June.
And Tony, as long as you can handle the publication, then that's fine.
Yeah, we're used to it in June.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you so much for the flexibility on the timing.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Dwan.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a question regarding, you mentioned the First Amendment. Can you tell me a little more detail what we are violating or possible lawsuit because of the First Amendment?
The proposed ordinance, we believe, would be valid in terms of the revision of the candidate definition to include elected officer. One of the referrals from rules that originated from former council member Esparza was to limit the ability of staff to work for an independent expenditure committee following their tenure with the city, and we did not believe that that would be a valid limitation.
Thank you. It is my understanding that you guys have been working on this issue about six months now. Can you explain how the memo by five of my colleagues is any different than what was spoke inside the closed session, specifically how their proposal opened the city up for tremendous legal risk, uncertainty, and perhaps even likelihood of lawsuits?
Councilmember Dwan, I'll handle that, and thank you for the question. The issue on number four was the, the recommendation from rules via council member Esparza's memo that would prohibit former employees from working on independent committees, and that is the issue that we felt unduly burdened the employee's speech rights because it involves elections and independent expenditure committees, and so that is what we are not bringing forward.
Thank you, Nora. Is there any other?
Councilor, let's not refer to anything specific that we may have reviewed in closed session, just as a note.
Right. Is there any other municipal government in the United States that you're aware of which impose the rules and restriction brought forth by the memorandum by my colleagues?
I'm not sure that I can answer that question, and Rosa, jump in if you can, but what we are doing is aligning the city's definition of candidate with the State Political Reform Act. So that, that is what's before the council, and then the, we already have a definition of agent in our code, in our municipal code, and it appears that what we would be asked to do is expand that, and that's what we'll be looking at and bringing next, bringing back to council if that's possible to do.
With respect to the third recommendation, Councilmember Dwan, we would have to do further research. There are existing limitations. However, we would need to research the limits of what can be done, and that's what we would need to return to council.
I'd like to motion that we accept the staff recommendation, which amended with a particular timeline when the staff will come back with these newer recommendations.
Okay, that was a, that was a substitute motion?
Yes, that was a substitute motion.
Okay, to only move the staff recommendation?
That is correct.
Okay. Is there a second on that? Okay, not seeing any. That motion fails. We'll go to, did you have anything else, councilmember?
No, that's it.
Okay. Councilor Candelas?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank my colleagues who worked together on putting this, this memo and just calling to attention to the importance of maintaining the integrity of our political system and preventing corruption and undue influence from special interest groups is paramount, and that's ultimately what we're doing, protecting the public trust in our government, and I look forward to supporting the motion on the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Yeah, I think I need a little clarification. What are we really moving forward? The memo which is written, item number one, approved and ordinance amending this, that's is what is in the recommendation from the attorney's thing. So that's not any new item, so that's basically accept the recommendation from the staff, right? Councilmember Cohen?
The only, I think the only significant addition is, is in the, the additional definition of agent.
Okay.
Because right now, agent says, that any agent is the elected official or the candidate and their campaign staff.
Yeah.
We're amending it to say, we'd like to amend it to say the campaign, the candidate and their campaign staff and city staff. So it's just adding city staff into the definition of agent.
Right.
Other than that, the first one is, is accepting the recommendations from the city attorney's office.
So first one is accepting, as is number two. We got the answer that that is a separate item which needs to be brought for updating, and so in this one, it's really doesn't do anything here in this memo, right?
Yeah, I mean, number three is, is we were asking, you know, to come back and let us know if there's more we can do from a reporting standpoint, but that will be a report back to us, and at that time, we would decide if we wanted to take any action on number three. Number three is not a current action. This would direct the ordinance that comes back in June to have the changes recommended by the attorney's office and update the definition of agent.
And, and item number four in your memo?
Number four is just making sure that this is done in an urgent timeline so that it's applied for this year's campaign cycle.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Let's support the memo.
Okay. Thanks, councilmember. That's all the hands I have. Let's vote.
Motion passes with eight to one, with Dwan voting no and Jimenez and Torres absent.
Okay. Thanks, Tony. We are on to item 5.1, BART Silicon Valley Two Extension. This is the transportation management plan. We have a staff presentation.
I'm Matt Lush, Acting Public Works Director, here to introduce our VTA team here with us on this project. The BART Silicon Valley is the largest, one of the largest public works projects in the region, estimated at about $9 billion. BART integrates the San Jose into a regional transit system. The six-mile extension of the BART service with a single-board tunnel with four new BART stations, three underground in the city of San Jose. There'll be two mid-tunnel facilities plus the new hall yard and maintenance facility. When we last presented a council in December 7, 2021, the city council directed staff to use elements of the municipal code 1336 to ensure VTA used a variety of tools for comprehensive construction impact mitigation. We are here today to approve the first construction transportation management plan, you'll hear this a bunch, lots of acronyms, CTMP, for early works at the West Portal. This will establish the first construction transportation management plan for the West Portal early works in District Six. This sets the stage for future CTMPs for major construction for the project expecting to last 10 years. The VTA team will review the contract-specific elements for the CTMP. This sets the stage for future CTMPs for the next 10 years. Our next steps will be VTA will present to the VTA board the draft Business Resource Program in June 6, 2023, and in the coming months and years, VTA will return to City Council for the remaining construction and transportation management plans. With us, we have four people, four members from the VTA team, Bernice Allenis, Erica Roques, Bruce Schutrock, and Luis Paez. Please.
Good afternoon. Thank you for providing VTA an opportunity to present upcoming activities for VTA's BART Silicon Valley Phase Two project. We're here to talk with you today about early project construction activities, which will primarily occur at the VTA-owned New Hall Yard property. This site is located adjacent to an already active rail corridor and includes the project's West Portal, where the tunnel boring machine will be launched. Ultimately, the site will include the Santa Clara BART station, a maintenance facility for trains, as well as train storage. A draft construction transportation management plan that was reviewed with city staff was included in the tunnel and track work contract specifications. It included the framework and guidelines to coordinate automobile, truck, bicycle, and pedestrian movements and access around and through construction sites, as well as emergency access during construction for the entire project. The draft CTMP was also discussed at the city council in December of 2021 as part of the execution of the VTA-City of San Jose Cooperative Agreement Number One. The draft construction transportation management plan provided an overview of the approach based on information available at the time with contract-specific construction transportation management plans to be developed by the contractors to provide greater site-specific details on circulation, access, emergency needs, all based on the contractors' means and methods for construction delivery. Since last presenting to the council at the end of 2021, the BART Silicon Valley project awarded the first contract package, we call that Contract Package Two, and that's for the tunnel and track work. It was awarded to the joint venture of Keywit Shea Trailer, KST for another acronym, and we've been working with them to develop the CP Two Contract Package Two Tunnel and Track Work Specific Construction Transportation Management Plans. Today's presentation will provide a high-level overview of the first contract-specific construction transportation management plan that has been developed for early construction activities at the West Portal area. This CTMP was developed in consultation and coordination with staff from the city of San Jose, city of Santa Clara, and other key stakeholders in the area, including PayPal Park, Costco, and developer Hunter Partners. Before I dive into the details of the CTMP for the West Portal, I want to provide a brief overview of other recent and ongoing project activities. In 2022, the project completed a station refinement effort, which explored refinements to vertical circulation and transit-oriented development integration at Diradon and the downtown BART stations. The outcomes of this effort were presented at the February 23 VTA Board meeting, as well as shared with the City of San Jose Transportation and Environment Committee for its 2023 annual report. The project has also been working to develop a Business Resource Program, also referred to as BRP, which will be presented to the VTA Board of Directors in June. The BRP is anticipated to launch later this year. Additional details will be shared with the city following input from the VTA Board on the Business Resource Program. Finally, the project is expected to launch the next iteration of the Design Review Committee later this year to further identify locations and opportunities for public art and signage, as well as wayfinding. Funding sources for the art are yet to be determined. First, we will provide a high-level overview of the project. VTA's BART Phase Two Extension Project will extend BART six miles from the Berriessa North San Jose Station that opened in 2020 into San Jose and Santa Clara. It will include one mile of track at ground level and five miles below grade in a single board tunnel. There are four stations along the alignment, three underground in San Jose at 28th Street, Little Portugal, downtown San Jose, and Diradon. And when we say underground, that's underground boarding with an above-ground station facility, and as well as the ground-level station in Santa Clara. It also includes the rail yard and maintenance facility previously mentioned in Santa Clara. The construction work we are discussing today is the first stage of construction efforts for the project. It will kick off the project's early construction phase, as shown in this diagram, shown in pink, which will lead into major construction, as you can see, into that darker purple area. which will lead into major construction, as you can see, into that darker purple area. This is our funding plan under the FTA New Starts Funding Program. The project has various funding sources, including federal, state, regional, and local. Funding sources include the Federal Transit Administration's New Starts Program, the Transit and Inter-City Rail Capital Program, Regional Measure 3, and 2000 Measure A and 2016 Measure B. The State of California recently awarded $375 million to the Santa Clara Valley Transportation Authority for the Phase 2 project into downtown San Jose and Santa Clara. This new award brings the state's total commitment through the Transit and Inter-City Rail Capital Program to $1.125 billion. Last year's state budget surplus made additional TERSIP funds possible and available for transportation infrastructure projects. This infusion of funds is very important and a critical step for VTA to qualify for roughly $4.6 billion in federal contribution, which is approximately 50% of this project cost. We hope the project overview section helps solidify your understanding of what we're planning to build. In the next section, I will dive deeper into early construction activities at the West Portal work area within VTA's New Hall Yard where the project will first break ground. I want to walk through the development of our Contract Package-specific Construction Transportation Management Plans, or CTMP as I've been referring to them. A reminder that the underlying purpose of the CTMPs is to minimize, to the extent possible, construction-related transportation impacts to all modes of transportation during construction. The Tunnel and Track Work Contract, CP2, CTMP, that we're discussing today is our first contract-specific package and covers early construction activities at the West Portal only in VTA's New Hall Yard. Developing the CP2-specific CTMP involved coordination between the Tunnel and Track Work Contractor, VTA, and the cities of San Jose and Santa Clara. The property spans both cities, and the project team met regularly with both cities to develop and review the proposed CP2-specific CTMP for early construction at the West Portal. There was also regular coordination with adjacent stakeholders such as PayPal Park, the developer Hunter Partners, and Costco throughout the CTMP development. In addition, the community was also engaged to provide input and consideration on the CTMP as public meetings, at public meetings, which I will cover on the next slide. KST has finalized the plan, and it is now with the cities for approval before any early construction activities will begin. As part of the CTMP development, we hosted two public meetings in mid-March. One was in person at Santa Clara University, and another was online on Zoom. And this says we had 50 people attending the public meeting, but actually, we had over 300 review the materials online and virtually. We did this to connect with the general public and share information regarding early construction activities at the West Portal site. Project staff promoted the event through several outlets, including physical mailers, flyering, email, social media, and numerous website updates. For those who missed it, the recording of the meeting posted on our website at the link shown has been available since then, and still people are dropping in to get information. The outcome of both meetings was very positive. Elements to be constructed. Now I'm going to walk you through the onsite early construction activities which will occur over the next two years. Note that the current state of the site is an empty dirt lot. VTA acquired this site in 2004 to prepare for this project. To orient you to the north, north is to the right, and then the 80 freeway is on the left side of the screen. Broca Road is also to the right. Coleman Avenue is at the bottom, and the active rail corridor runs directly in the center, just above the area that's designated in red. The red area outlined is VTA's New Hall Yard property, which is the area where all of these early construction activities will be taking place. As you can see, the site is directly adjacent to the active rail corridor where Union Pacific, as well as Caltrain, operate. And Caltrain operates in the area from 4:30 a.m. to 1:30 a.m. There will be three entrances into the site. The entrance in the blue circle on the left at New Hall Street will be for employee vehicles only, while the entrances on New Hall Drive and Broca, shown in those golden rod circles, will be for the construction vehicles. For the employee entrance that you see on the left, there will be two employee parking lots designated in the blue, as well as the site offices. The hall routes shown in orange lead to each of the entrances, and they go from Coleman Avenue, and the trucks will then access I-80. The tunnel lining factory is shown in the dark blue, which is kind of in the center of the area, and it will be constructed, and that's where the tunnel lining segments will be fabricated. In addition, during this phase, the factory needs to produce 360 tunnel alignment segments before major construction can begin, and that's about 13% of the total number needed for the whole five-mile tunnel. The facility can fabricate six segments per day, and one ring within the tunnel requires nine segments. Eventually, in the next phase of construction, the lining segments will be placed in by the tunnel boring machine as soil is removed to create a structurally sound tube underground. Once the TBM is fully operating at optimum speeds, it will install six rings or 54 segments every 24 hours. So that's why we need to have advanced supply of those to keep up with the demand. The tunnel lining storage area is shown in purple, kind of towards the center there. And this, in this phase, the ground needs to be prepared to store the tunnel lining segments. Each of those tunnel lining segments weighs about 40,000 pounds. Shown in the dark green, that is where the West Portal area is and where the tunnel boring machine will begin tunneling into the ground. And the TBM shaft will serve as the assembly area and eventual launching point for the TBM, and accordingly, the shaft will house many large support structures. During operation, the tunnel boring machine shaft will also be the area where excavated soil is taken out of the tunnel and where tunnel lining segments will be brought in and ultimately installed. The grout plant shown in the brown will also be constructed. The two-acre excavated materials bin shown in pink will be constructed during this phase of work as well. Finally, a noise curtain in cyan, the upper left there, will be constructed along the west side of the site to reduce noise from construction activities. The contractor will determine the exact length of the curtain to ensure they meet the noise mitigation requirements. These are a few of the key early construction activities that will be occurring at the site, as well as their earliest anticipated start date and duration. Constructing the tunnel lining factory is anticipated to begin late this summer and wrap up in about a year. Once complete, the tunnel lining factory will operate beginning in fall of 2024 and last throughout major construction, creating the concrete tunnel lining segments that will make up the interior of the tunnel. The supportive excavation, construction of the tunnel boring shaft and portal, and preparation of the TBM launch site are expected to begin in fall of this year and last for approximately 15 months. The construction of the excavated material bin is anticipated to begin in winter of 2024 and last about six months. All of these activities are required to prepare the site for major construction to begin. Early construction activities at the West Portal will require extended work and haul hours beyond standard work hours in the city of San Jose and Santa Clara. As work begins later this summer, early construction activities will begin with a single shift only, meaning work will begin 6 a.m. and end at 6 p.m., including on Saturdays. This time period is shown in the light green towards the left on the timeline above. Planned for late 2023, critical construction activities will ramp up that require double-shifted work and double-shifted hauling in addition to the Saturday work. This time period is shown in the teal. Double shifts are for 22 hours and begin at 6 a.m. and last until 4 a.m. It's expected that this extended hauling for 22 hours a day will be required for 15 months for critical concrete pores during the supportive excavation. This is critical for safety, to make sure that that, that big shaft is solidly supported, and there wouldn't be any type of cave isn't such. So that's, that's part of the requirement for these extended work hours. Construction of the TBM shaft and portal and preparation of the TBM launch site. After these critical activities are complete, the hauling will revert back to a single shift while the work hours will continue 20 hours a day, which is shown in blue. This map shows the contract-specific CTMPs. As I mentioned earlier, we're doing construction transportation management plans for the individual contracts and for individual work areas. For the tunnel and track work, we have these three contract-specific packages for the CTMPs. The area of work covered by the first CTMP includes the West Portal adjacent to the future New Hall Maintenance Facility. The second contract-specific CTMPs is expected to cover early construction and major construction for Diradon, downtown, and 28th Street, Little Portugal stations. The third CTMP is expected to cover major construction back at the West Portal area again. And the fourth is the final CP2 CTMP and expected to cover early and major construction at the East Portal. In addition, there will be additional contract transportation management plans once the other contractors are on board. There are three additional plans currently in development that relate to the Contract Package 2 CTMP for early construction, the one that we've gone through today. The first is the PayPal Event Management Plan, which will determine and minimize the impacts of truck traffic during PayPal events. It is being developed in consultation with key stakeholders, including PayPal, Costco, Hunter Partners, and both of the cities, San Jose and Santa Clara. There's also the Trucker Management Plan, and it will manage and ensure truck drivers follow approved haul routes and truck distributions between New Hall Drive and Broca Road. And lastly is the Traffic Response Plan, which will outline the lines of communication and processes to coordinate truck hauling when New Hall Drive or Broca Road are blocked for unforeseen circumstances. It is being developed in consultation with the cities and will be a living document that will routinely be updated as needed. These three plans are intended to supplement the CP2 Contract Transportation Management, Construction Transportation Management Plan for early construction activities at the West Portal, and will continue to be developed in parallel with the approval of the CTMP today. And we, the four of us, are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you for the thorough presentation. Let's go to public comment first.
Roxanne?
So I'm going to beg to the new members of this council to say hell no. Look about what you just heard. The residents are going to have to go 15 months on four hours sleep. Would you do that in your neighborhood? No, you're going to do it to a poor neighborhood. And you're going to spend nine million, billion? To serve the downtown landowners? By putting it underground so that the downtown landowners can build Twitter-style buildings in San Jose? And I ask you, think about it. Oakland and San Francisco have already done this. Go down to Civic Center in San Francisco and see how safe you feel. See how safe you feel walking in that kind of environment. Japan and India have already figured it out on how to do high-speed rail on elevated tracks and not put such a burden on taxpayers and on residents. We should not be serving the interests of the downtown builders. We should be serving the interests of the people that live in San Jose. Thank you.
Blair?
Hello, this is Blair. Am I working? Am I on?
Yes.
Okay, hi Blair, with a minute 50. Yeah, I've spoken previously on this item. You know, I've been really impressed. I think it's a hopeful sign that we decided, that people decided that we should lay the BART tracks parallel to each other instead of on top of each other in the tunnel. That was kind of a transformational time period that we're going through when that decision was happening. I think we really have to take that to heart in how we consider our projects, and when we feel something is unsafe or uncomfortable, we have to learn how to be open to want to talk about it. I mean, that's what I'm trying to learn to do here at Public Comment. I mean, that's my intention. I don't want to be mean-spirited or like, gotcha. I just simply want to practice how uncomfortable topic matter can be. There can be a place where we can make it a more comfortable conversation. So I'm trying to learn how to do that, and that's what we did with the BART tracks. And wherever that can be of help, hopefully, I'll be there. Hopefully, you know, we can all be working towards such things, you know, that we want to do those sort of things in our public future. For instance, it's my understanding there will not be, the BART tunneling cannot start until 2024, the summer. Yet, it can be difficult to get clarity on such an idea and process. I hope that can be of help to yourselves in how we talk about this issue, and we don't fiddle-faddle around it and be real honest in such concepts. And good luck in preserving buildings, old buildings of San Jose. They're important. Thank you.
Luke?
Hello, my name is Luke DeWolker, and I'm the Vice President of Operations for the Sounds of Earthquakes in PayPal Park. I've been the head of the Parking and Traffic Management Plan for PayPal Park for the past nine years since the stadium opened in 2015. The Sounds of Earthquakes support the expansion of the VTA and BART project and are excited about the opportunity of the public transportation supporting PayPal Park events. We do have concerns about the Parking and Traffic Plan that VTA presented during PayPal Park large-scale events. We are asking for construction traffic to avoid Coleman Avenue from one hour prior to an event starting to when the event starts, then from the end of an event to one hour after the event concludes. Adding additional vehicles during peak traffic close to and from PayPal Park will negatively impact the Parking and Traffic Management Plan that the earthquakes have organized the City of San Jose Department of Transportation, but also have impact on the surrounding community. We want to continue to keep an open line of communication with VTA and work with VTA and the City of San Jose to develop the best traffic mitigation plan. Thank you.
Paul?
Thank you. Yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. The mayor, ex-mayor, Licardo, Councilman Peralis and Carrasco were strategically co-signators on the non-disclosure agreement in 2016. And then, at the same time, they went to work on the VTA Board. And so there's a conflict of interest with respect to these BART extension. Anything having to do with BART, anything having to do with VTA, and everything, anything having to do with this council is corrupted and is subject to actual criminal prosecution. Because there's the conflicts of interest that have happened. These BART contracts are asking the public to do this. Don't look at the fact that you had a mayor sign a non-disclosure agreement and have BART in on those conversations. Don't look at that and the fact that he was on the Board of the VTA. And that there's no conflict of interest here at all, at all. This is perfectly in line. This is just, this is, it stinks. You know, I mean, how, how much more corruption do we have to be confronted with in these meetings? To, to sit there and say, you know what? This is wrong. This is corrupt. You know, we're looking for some politicians with some backbone. You know, someone that, you know, that when you swore an oath to this office to represent the interests of the public, you wouldn't let something like this go down if you were a citizen and you saw this. So why are you doing it while you're members of the council? I mean, this stinks. Licardo, Carrasco, and, and Peralis were all in on it. Why? Because District 3, District 5 were necessary in order to facilitate this, and then they were on the Board. Come on.
Back to the council. Sorry, I don't have the quite the display here. Let's go to Councilmember Batra.
I didn't request to speak on that one. One of the few items.
Great. The next person is Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I did request to speak. Thank you, everyone.
I only follow the list.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Whatever's in front of me.
Yeah, I got you, I got you. Thank you to VTA and BART for this very important project. Really looking forward to BART being extended to downtown and through East San Jose. Think it's going to empower a lot of our residents to navigate to work, visit their families, visit different cities downtowns, have people visit our downtowns. families, visit different cities downtowns, have people visit our downtown. So just really looking forward to the economic benefits. And one thing also I'm interested in is the potential jobs, well, the real jobs that are going to be coming here for the construction of BART. And that leads me just to like a few questions. Do we know if there's going to be any sort of apprenticeships or pipelines to careers included in the overall BART construction plan?
Yeah, we do. We have a project labor agreement, and as such, part of that includes some apprenticeship programs. I don't have all the details, but I know that that's included in the PLA.
That's wonderful. Anything like, and I know you may not have the details right now, but is there going to be anything in regards to like local hire or maybe opportunities for minority-owned businesses to get contracts?
So we do have a small and disadvantaged business school as part of this project. It is, I believe, 20% overall, and you could, is it that, yeah, for a CP2. So yes, that is a very strong consideration as we're building the labor force for this project.
What about local hire? Is there any local hire language in there?
I believe there might be something in the PLA, but I have to double-check that and confirm for you.
No, I appreciate this. I just, just realizing that more than just BART coming to San Jose, this is also an economic investment in the workforce here in Silicon Valley. And then, in turn, they're going to be coming into downtown Willow Glen, Alum Rock, East Ridge to come and spend their money. So really excited for the economic benefits of this project. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. I want to thank staff for all your work and your presentation on this plan. I did want to ask Public Works to weigh in on your thoughts about this plan. I know you just kind of turned it over to them, but this is happening in our city, and I'd really like your input on the plan.
There has been a lot of back and forth with VTA and with our partners in DOT in terms of what makes most sense, and in coordination with the partners as well, in terms of at PayPal Park with earthquakes, to understand what the real needs and impacts, and even connecting in with the City of Santa Clara and the impacts there. No plans are always perfect, but we think that they have a good plan, it's sound, we have a good relationship with VTA, so that should we need to pivot, we believe we have the relationship that we could pivot if things aren't working for everybody.
Is there something specific you'd like to share with us that you don't think is perfect about this plan?
No plans are perfect when it comes to construction. It's the big, there's always challenges there. There's nothing in particular that gives me heartburn.
Okay, thank you. There is going to be a lot of truck traffic in, when this is over, is there any plan for VTA to be repaving the streets that they'll be using for all of this hauling?
I might have our contractor give some specifics, but I know that we're doing analysis on the roadway conditions, and there'll be measurements before and after. And there is, I believe, in our comprehensive agreement, the CP, first one, that we did have a formula for resurfacing the roadways and our proportionate share based on the use.
Okay. Jay or Matt?
Yes, to answer directly. So we work with DOT to assess the current condition of the roadway. We analyze the work, not just with theirs, but anyone else, and we, there is a formula for repayment should the roadway be damaged in a way that this project influenced it.
Okay, and it's not just the frequency of the traffic, but also the weight of the trucks that are going on the roads?
Correct, correct.
To, okay, thank you. And then, for the VTA staff, the double-shift work, what, and the hauling, what is the estimated noise that's going to be happening in the middle of the night when people are trying to sleep and people are trying to keep their babies, get their babies back to sleep in the middle of the night?
Good afternoon. My name is Louis Pice. Thank you for your question. The critical operations that will be performed at night is for the shaft work, which is that very large excavation, has to be made, the wheelhouse, the tunnel boring machine, and excavation associated with that operation as well. There was a very thorough vibration and noise impact analysis performed that actually indicated that we needed a sound wall to mitigate the noisy impacts to the adjacent community, and that is something that both cities are in the process of evaluating, and is part of our plan on establishing and putting in place prior to any construction commencing for the double-shift work.
Thank you. So there will be a sound wall in place before the double-shift work starts?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, in terms of the communication about double shifts when they're starting, the timeline for them, what is going to be, what is the communications plan with the community?
So we did share a very similar presentation that we shared today at the public meeting that we had those 50 individuals attend at Santa Clara University. So we shared all of that in the double shifting, and we have all the information online. We also will have an interactive construction map that will be posted on the VTA website that will provide any construction activities in real time. So we'll be communicating with the public on an ongoing basis. Right now, we are in a process to get individuals to sign up. We don't want to spam people, so we're letting them know that this is going to be coming available, and they sign up for any areas that we're interested in. So we're really encouraging it and trying to get as many people signed up so that we can be proactive in giving them information.
Is there any mailers that are going out to the nearest neighbors?
Yeah, we do a series of direct-mail postcards, we do social media, all the things we did to advertise the meeting. We'll do flyering to adjacent neighborhoods, so we pretty much use every method of communication that we have at our ready.
Great. And then, if and when issues arise during the course of construction or double shifts, what is the avenue for people to make comments or complaints? And my office is very interested in knowing about this, so we can refer them to you.
We have a 24-hour hotline that will be once construction starts. We have the Community Outreach Hotline right now, and we have prompts, but once we get into active construction, it'll be manned 24 hours, and the prompts will be like, if this is an emergency, press 1. If this is 2 and you want a call back within 24 hours, press 2. So we will have a 24-hour hotline for the project.
Okay, thank you. My final question is about the concerns that the quakes raised in their public comment. Can you address their concerns about their event days?
Yeah, I'm going to let Erica address that, and that's part of that other plan that we're working on, the PayPal Coordination Plan. But Erica, I'm going to let you.
Yeah, so we've been meeting with both cities and PayPal to walk through and help their understanding why we need to have the extended work hours and to kind of come to an agreement on an approach of how to handle the traffic, to route it in the area during those, their events. And so we've had several meetings and are very close to coming to agreement, and had a very good meeting last week, and I think we're pretty much landed on our approach for how to handle modifications to the project's truck traffic during event egress times. And so we're working together with the cities to finalize that plan so that everyone is in agreement on the approach moving forward.
Okay, will that be coming back to us?
That's something that we can share with you all, what, where we land on it.
Matt, were you planning to bring that back to the full council? If not, I would like a briefing about it.
We were not intending to, but yes, we'll brief you for sure.
Great, thank you. That's it for me.
Thanks, Councilmember. Glad to know about the hotline. Just beyond those excellent questions, a little broader. My understanding is we, the drill has not been ordered yet. Is that correct? We know?
Mikeoff? Yeah, we're doing some final space proofing for the exact size of the TBM counting, like, considering the loads and the weight and all that. But yes, we are very close to ordering that.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that. Once we put in the order, what's the time between the order going in and being able to start drilling?
So it's approximately 14 to 16 months or so for the, like, manufacturing the TBM. Then they have to disassemble it and then ship it, and then they have to reassemble it. So then that's another six months or so to reassemble it after it arrives to get it to actual bore. So we're a good 18 to 24 months out, minimal.
So this could be two years from when we place the order?
Yeah.
About two years. Okay, so every day it takes us now to place this order, we're two years out on being able to start drilling?
From the major construction, yes, of the drilling. But all these activities are leading-
Everything else we saw in the presentations happening now to prepare for that.
Exactly.
Okay. Is there anything that we can do to help accelerate the date by which we can order the drill? Sounds like you're close. How close is close?
Pretty close, as far as I understand. I mean, we are doing-
It's close weeks, months, or years? Because with these big projects, you know, it's hard to gauge.
I want to say weeks.
Great, okay. That's better than I was expecting to hear. Is weeks correct? Is that where, is that the consensus? Few months? Wow, it's inflating rapidly. Let's hope the price tag doesn't grow that quickly. All right, well, I just wanted to express my interest in seeing us get that order in quickly because we know it's, there's a huge lag, right, up to two years, and we want to get this going. Okay, great. I don't see any additional questions. Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Great, so we're, thank you. So we're going to accept the staff report. All, let's, let's vote.
Is unanimous?
Great, thank you all very much. Okay, we're on to item 5.2, which is a resurfacing project. Let's go to public comment first.
Ruthie? Ruthie, please go ahead and unmute. All right, we'll go back to you. Paul?
Thank you, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. I would like it to be a part of the discussion along with the contracts for the resurfacing is that a racial equity lens be applied to the construction schedules. One of the things that came up when, you know, everybody was talking about racial equity a few years back, I've yet to hear it discussed openly within the context of these meetings, was that what Councilman Peralis and I both discovered was that when you look at paving streets, streets on the east side, even streets in the horseshoe, were being neglected in favor of other neighborhoods, which we all know the Willow Glen, Rose Garden, Cambria, we all know the neighborhoods. And what it showed was that the wear and tear on the cars in the areas that were not getting surfaced actually experienced more necessity for repairs. And this is an equity issue because these are the people that are least capable of making those repairs, man. People are just surviving. People aren't even living anymore. People are just merely surviving. We're not going out to eat. We're eating at home. We're going and we're getting food. People that are working in these neighborhoods are going and getting food at food banks, man. I mean, come on, people, I mean, are you serious? And this has everything to do with these, with these potholes and these streets that get neglected? But you go on certain parts of this city, man, and those roads are smooth. And these are the people that are most likely capable of being able to, no, they don't even have older cars. These are newer vehicles. And so they're the least in need of having their streets paved in such ways. So I would liken equity lens applied to the schedules when these projects come to fruition. Thank you.
Ruthie? Ruthie, you're not unmuting. We'll go ahead to Blair.
Hi, Blair Beifen here. Thanks a lot for this item. I hope it can be noted that to the new council, and you know, I've been doing this work for eight years now, and I try to be positive most of the time. I sometimes offer something a little odd and strange at public comment, but it actually is what we're already working on and considering, but we just don't know how to voice it and make it regular. So I try to compensate by that, by trying to be really positive as well. And so for this item, I just wanted to give a glowing reminder that the City of San Jose, you know, in working out their pavement issues, I don't know, way back 2014 and 15 and 16, came upon the idea of bond issues, of Measure T bond issues. It's been a real help to San Jose, and it's been a real successful, good program. Congratulations. When you go to other cities in the Bay Area, they really consider using bond issues for street repair things at this time. When this issue was brought, created, and the bond issue was developed, I don't know, maybe in 16 or 18, you know, it had to go through a process of a public oversight was brought into the equation. I don't know where that came into the process exactly. I would like to know that history and understand that better because I think it's been of help. And when I go to other cities for them to offer public oversight for these sort of bond issues, it seems to be helpful as well. So just a thank you, a good reminder that public oversight always helps and that we're moving towards that sort of future, a better public oversight for most things we do. So again, thank you for your good work on this item and how Measure T has been of great help for all of us. Thank you.
Roxanne?
Thank you. Normally, I'm on the dais when I listen to Mr. Soto speak, and I'm just asking you to listen to him tonight. I understand that you might not want to, but listen to him. I live in what I call the slums of San Jose, District 3, and I've actually had my car's radiator tube that connects my engine to my heater core break because of potholes. And the roads might be smooth in the neighborhoods you live in, but the neighborhoods we live in, you let the contractors get away with horror. Think about it. I hit a pothole so hard that it broke the hose. Don't let them get away with that.
Back to the council?
Thank you.
I'll move approval of the North San Jose paving contract.
Second.
Thank you. Let's vote.
The vote was unanimous?
Okay, run item, thank you, run item 5.3, which is another order of contract for road paving to a public comment.
No hands raised at this time.
Move approval?
Second.
Great, let's vote. Yeah, no hands.
The vote was unanimous with Cohen, Torres, and Jimenez absent.
Great, thank you. All right, we got, we got an eye from Councilwoman Cohen. Let's, let's mark it. Okay, we're on to item 8.1, which is an update on the future of San Pedro Street. We have a staff presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Blagizalalich, Deputy Director in the Office of Economic Development, and I'm here in the box today with my colleagues, Matt Lesch, who's Acting Director of Public Works, and Fire Chief James Dobson. And we are going to present on item 8.1, which is the future of San Pedro Street. So in 2020, the SJ Alfresco Initiative basically allowed businesses throughout the city to conduct business operations outdoors. And this was very obviously in response to the COVID-19 pandemic and the restrictions imposed by our colleagues in public health. And so at that time, San Pedro Street was closed to non-emergency vehicular traffic, and businesses were allowed to put their tables and chairs out into the street and onto the sidewalk. In June of 2022, the City Council and Mayor extended that street closure under one of the emergency declarations until June 30th of this year, 2023. emergency declarations until June 30th of this year, 2023. And at that same time, directed staff to explore the potential of actually leaving San Pedro Street closed permanently to vehicular traffic. So the goal, very obviously, is continued vibrancy and a safe environment for visitors and residents on San Pedro Street. And so to that end, staff procured a design consultant to develop some initial concepts. We had multiple meetings and one-on-one conversations with San Pedro Square business owners and received feedback from those business owners and property owners on the street through our partners at the San Jose Downtown Association. The major consideration factors that were, were kind of the central theme through all of the different design concepts were fire life safety access, service access, both delivery and garbage, parking garage ingress and egress. So the Market San Pedro Garage is right there in front of San Pedro Street and is a very important part of bringing folks down to San Pedro and to the surrounding area. And then also the idea of being able to create equal outdoor seating for businesses along the street due to kind of the, the special nature and configuration of the street. So those were the consideration factors that were at the forefront for both staff and design consultants. And so here you can see kind of a sketch of the pre-COVID condition of San Pedro Street generally, and this is between Santa Clara Street and St. John Street versus the proposed layout. And so in the pre-COVID condition, you can very easily see you've got cars running down the street. That is the, the central spine of San Pedro. And you have the outdoor seating up on the sidewalk for, for the businesses on, on both sides of the street. In the new proposed long-term design concept, basically what you're doing is moving the pedestrian right-of-way into the middle or center of San Pedro, and you're allowing the sidewalk seating to extend farther out into the, the current sidewalk. In the proposed condition, the street would actually be flush, and businesses on both sides of the street would have 20 feet off of the face of their building for outdoor seating and activation. The central spine, then in essence is the, now the pedestrian walkway, would also be used for fire life safety access, so emergency vehicle access. The street would remain closed to other traffic, and the Market San Pedro Garage ingress on Market Street would be shut off as it has been for the last three years. However, the exit from the garage onto San Pedro Street on the north end of the street would remain. So in essence, the, the same configuration as we have had out there during, during COVID from a street logistics standpoint. And so here is a really great stretch, a stretch, sketch, excuse me, of the vibrancy that we want to maintain on San Pedro Street. And so you can see the pedestrian walkway in the middle. This is the south end, it's closest to Santa Clara Street. There's a proposal for some hydraulic bollards to be able to, you know, easily prevent vehicles from going down the street, but also to have access if needed. And then the, the seating that comes 20 feet off of both sides of the building. So the future aspiration. This is again just schematic pre-COVID on the south end of the street with the vehicles. And then you can see the proposed pedestrian promenade down the center. So it's basically a 60-foot street across 202020. This is a mid-block design concept. Again, this is where the moment shops are on the east side of the street built into the, the ground floor of the garage, and you can see the vibrancy that we want to continue to have in the, in that location. Again, schematic, mid-block, the proposed, which is the promenade down the middle, and then the, the seating 20 feet off the face of the building. And so there would be shared responsibility with this. On the left-hand side, you can keep, see kind of the city's investment, the city's responsibility, which would be all of the major construction, creating a flush condition on the street, installing additional trees, installing hydraulic bollards, kind of all of the infrastructure that is needed to really change the, the logistical layout. And then, of course, maintenance and replacement of elements that are in the public right-of-way. On the right, you have the business and property owner investment, which includes obtaining the appropriate sidewalk seating permits from our Department of Public Works, the design and installation of their sidewalk seating to comply with the regulations, the annual permit fees, inspection fees, renewal fees, of course, purchasing the furniture themselves, maintaining the landscape within their permitted seating area, and then also, very importantly, maintaining ADA accessibility into that space. So the concept plan cost estimate is currently at about $9.5 million. The project delivery costs 3.3, almost 3.4 million. Hard construction costs 5.5, almost 5.6 million with some contingency. The, the project is currently unfunded, does not have any funding source associated with it. And these total project costs do not include any potential utility relocation or any costs that would be incurred with the pedestrian mall process. And those are currently unknown. And, and the pedestrian mall process is kind of the last item that I wanted to mention in this presentation. That's really going to be the mechanism which allows us to keep the street closed on an ongoing basis. Currently, we are under the emergency order declaration, and we have that until June 30th. And then the idea would be that we have the pedestrian mall process. And that pedestrian mall process involves a resolution of intent being brought forward to council that talks about what we want to do, why we want to do it, and how we're gonna do it. There's a public notice process that must be completed at least 90 days before the public hearing at council. So the resolution of intent sets the public hearing date, and then there's a, a public notice process that leaves, that lasts at least 90 days. There's a public hearing at council, and then council has the approval of an ordinance and also rules and regulations that govern the operation of the pedestrian mall. We have done this process once before. It's been a long, long time, the Paseo de San Antonio. And I believe we've also, that was one of the ways we closed San Carlos Street to the university previous to that. So it's not unfamiliar to us, but it's, it's definitely been a while. And with that, I conclude the presentation, and we are here for any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thanks, Blag. I appreciate the work you, James, Matt, and many others on the teams have done to help us navigate what is, in some ways, an unfortunate situation. One of the most successful things we've seen throughout the pandemic was Alfresco. Councilmember Davis did a lot of work on that, as did others, and the, you know, this space in particular has just been so vibrant and beloved by, by residents. That being said, we obviously need to comply with state fire code, and we have some public works needs. And so I appreciate the work you all have done to help us navigate and get, get to a path forward that's gonna hopefully work for everyone and maintain as much of that, that vibrancy and, and public space as we possibly can. We'll come back to council discussion after public comment. Do we have any?
Yes. Paul?
Yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. My opinion varies, differs greatly. This is, it's, it's kind of like consistent, though, on how this country, and especially this city, considering it's the first capital of the state of California, continues to profit from the deaths of other people. I mean, because this is what it is. It is the profiteering from the deaths of Chicanos, Mexicanos on the east side of San Jose. So leave it to, leave it to the Anglo population to profit from death, because that's what this city is built on. You're built, you're trying to allocate monies to build up an area where Thomas Fallon's house is. I mean, how disgusting is that? This is a man that profiteered from the decapitations of Native Americans, people. That's why history is so important to center within the context of these meetings. Okay, now, for those of you that don't have any memory of it, $6 million went into the, to the renovation of Thomas Fallon's house. Six million. That is crazy. And now they're asking for nine? And then, yeah, we're gonna build up, we're gonna build up this area even more with city money, and it's gonna build up the area that historically served as the home of a man that was a beneficiary of the decapitations along with Peter Burnett. Remember, Thomas Fallon's name and Peter Burnett's name are on the same Sonic Lodge 10 document. They were all Masons, and so was Clyde Arbuckle. And I suspect so was Mayor Tom McHenry. This is his proposal. McHenry wants this area built up. He's the one that's up to this. Mayor McHenry, no, sorry, no, thank you. Quit profiteering from the deaths of my people. I'm sorry, I don't accept that.
Blair?
Hi. Some good words from Paul, thank you. Understanding the history of this area. It's my feeling the history of the area has also been, you know, San Pedro Square is part of original City Hall and just the original people from, I don't know who moved here, I guess Spain in 1776 first landed there and made it a, a center for themselves. And then it became a, a City Hall center for Ringos, I guess, in the 1840s and 50s. I'm not sure, but this area is a centerpiece of San Jose. It is a center meeting place that, for 300 years now, 250 years, so at least. I'm, I'm curious if, if the Indian indigenous population beforehand, what, what their feelings of the area is about. Well, how did they use this area? The same with Caesar Chavez Plaza area. Both of these areas excuse to me the ideas of warmth and, you know, a meeting place, cooperation. I'm sure the river used to be much higher, and so it's kind of, maybe it was a meeting place from the river, you know, for people to meet and, and gather and get ready for things. And I, I hope that can be respected into our future. We know how to do that. I think it's ideas of warmth as, as how to do that and not with coldness. I worry about the new statue that wants to be built at Caesar Chavez Plaza. It's a bit too cold to me. I think we should be working on ideas of warmth, of people meeting, cooperating, and gathering. And I, I just wanted to, that's my form of history to, to remind ourselves of this subject matter at this time of San Pedro Square area, Caesar Chavez Plaza.
Erica?
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. My name is Erica Pinto with SPUR. We wanted to express our continued support for the pedestrianization of San Pedro Street in downtown San Jose. Enabling outdoor operations via the Alfresco program and in San Pedro Street was really successful, and it made these places the center of the city, and they have become popular destinations for both residents and visitors alike. We deeply appreciate the work to engage local business, community, evaluate options, and present a concept for the permanent closure of the street. We simply ask that the city does all it can to explore new ways to innovate, collaborate, and remove barriers to the creation of high-quality public spaces that uplift the entire community. This is a centerpiece of public life in San Jose, and it deserves it. San Jose should take this opportunity to set a precedent of efficiently and effectively creating a public amenity and preserving the central spaces for dining and social gathering that have given this project overwhelming community support. The focus should be on preserving and expanding on what made it work throughout the pandemic and into today, and not its identity as a street. We asked City Council and staff to continue making permanent this pedestrianized public space for the benefit of downtown's economic and public vibrancy, and to do so by ambitiously making sure that thoughtful planning, great urban design, and innovative product delivery steer this public amenity forward. Thank you very much for your time.
Back to the council.
Great, thank you. Councilor Foley?
Wow, I didn't actually expect to be first, so here I am. Thank you for that presentation. I think this is really exciting. As the mayor alluded to, this was one of the positive things, actually, that came out of COVID and the shutdown was the ability to have these Alfresco opportunities so people could dine outdoors and still interact with folks. So I'm, I'm really thrilled to see that we're moving forward to try and make this a permanent area at San Pedro Square. I've been supportive of that all along. But I do have some questions for you about the pedestrian mall. How, the funding matter aside, because I'm gonna ask you that in a minute, but how long will it take to receive the pedestrian mall designation and to do this work?
So council member, not exactly sure, but we know that there are some requirements, and Nora, you can, you can please chime in if I'm misspeaking in any way, but we know that there are some requirements of the Mall Act. So we'll come to council with a resolution of intent, and our intent is to come to council before, by or before the end of Q3, so by or before the end of September with that resolution. And at that time, you have to set a hearing date for the public hearing. That can be no less than 90 days. So there's a 90-day public notice process. Within that time, we obviously want to do more community outreach, engage more folks. The, the community outreach that we have done to date has been primarily with the businesses that line the street, because, I think for obvious reasons. So there'll be that engagement and community outreach, and then I believe there are a few other requirements of kind of the, the mall process. But we, you know, we hope to do this as quickly as possible because we want to be able to kind of continue to move forward and maybe focus on some other things like figuring out how we're gonna fund some of these improvements. So, you know, we're hoping within nine months at the latest, we can, we can have this, this done. But we'll have at least two times that we'll be coming back to council for approvals.
Okay, thank you. Can San Pedro Square remain closed to traffic until that is accomplished?
Yes, the plan is to have it remain closed to vehicular traffic, and we are making some adjustments on the street to ensure that we have the proper fire life safety access and that we continue to have egress out of the Market San Pedro Garage onto San Pedro Street. For, for the, just the south, sorry, just the north end. So people will use that egress, and they'll make a quick right or left onto St. John. It's the way that it's set up currently.
Right, I understand. And, and Fire Marshal Dobson, you're comfortable with the changes that we're gonna make to, that they will conform to fire safety?
That's correct, council member. The, the proposed long-term solution to San Pedro does meet the fire code.
And this, and in the short term, we can do what is necessary to still meet the fire code and protect the neighbors and the residents and still be within the, the regulations?
Correct. The interim solution does meet, it is, it models the long-term solution, and it does meet the fire code.
Okay, great. And, thank you. And the resident, or the businesses are mostly supportive of this? What's the, I would think they'd be thrilled. The picture, the, the rendering you have is beautiful.
Yes, the businesses are supportive of keeping vehicle traffic, vehicular traffic off of the street. Actually, even a couple of the businesses that said they might not utilize the full extent of the outdoor seating also, you know, wanted to still keep the, the regular vehicular traffic off.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. One, one final question. During the pandemic, the governor signed an executive order that, or an emergency order that we could allow alcohol to be sold outside. Is that, will that continue for the pedestrian mall and the ongoing operation? Because that's a profit consideration for those businesses, I imagine.
So there is legislation that currently covers, I believe it's for, at least for an additional year, and we can circle back on the exact timing, but the current legislation that allows, that was in place under COVID, that allows restaurants and bars to kind of serve alcohol in their adjacent space. And so this would be kind of extension of sidewalk seating would be that, and that would allow them to be able to serve alcohol in that space. And I know we're working very closely with our IGR team to, to watch legislation and also be on the forefront of advocacy to make sure that all of and also be on the forefront of advocacy to make sure that all of, uh, the, any, anything that's happening at the state legislature is aligned with what we're doing here. So we're not going to put anybody in, in an awkward position.
Great, thank you. And we are in the middle of budget session, but, and, but this is nine point five isn't coming in this budget, which is probably a good idea, but where's the money coming from? Where do you, have you thought about where the nine point five rounded might be generated from?
Uh, there, there is some direction in the memo that the mayor and a few council members put out about seeking private sources, potentially, you know, going for a federal or a state earmark. Uh, so no, we have not definitively identified, um, the sources, but we do have a few ideas and kind of collectively as a team are going to do what we can to, to figure out how to get this done, um, in some fashion or format.
Great, thank you. I won't make the motion because I wasn't on the memo. I'll leave that up to one of the five makers of the memo, but thank you for that. I'm very supportive.
You can move the memo. Uh, let me go to Councilor Dawn.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Omar Torres, Councilmember Dev Davis, for joining on to this memorandum. I want to thank you, staff, for the report, and thank you to our fire department for keeping us safe and comply with, you know, fire code. I, I love the plan for the pedestrianization of San Pedro Square, and I believe that our memorandum encapsulate the grand vision that all of us want, uh, for downtown. And I believe this is the first pedestrian mall, and the first of its kind in the city of San Jose. And I look forward to have the increase of tourism and outdoor activity in our city, including farmer's market, celebration, uh, even special event like the Super Bowl sixty party downtown. I'm glad that, I believe that we're going to get a unanimous vote on this, and, uh, I motion for approval of our memorandum.
I'd second it.
Great, thank you. So, you know, acknowledging that I don't fully know what goes into the pedestrian mall act, nine months does sound like a long time, so I just want to understand, is there anything that we're precluded from doing or that those property, property owners might want to do that has to wait for the pedestrian mall act to be enacted?
Um, I, I don't believe so.
Okay.
But I, I don't know, Nora, you can, I don't know if I'm misspeaking on that, but I don't believe so.
Under the pedestrian mall act, it, there's, um, really a ninety-day, uh, window between the first council action of our intention to establish a, um, a mall, a pedestrian mall, and then the, um, second council action to approve, um, the pedestrian mall, and in between, we need to notice the public and do outreach and all of that.
Yeah.
So it, I think the rest of the time is really just, uh, trying to get ready for the council to do the initial action and then, uh, have the final hearing.
Right, so I certainly understand why we need at least ninety days, probably a little more than that. Um, I, I only ask because nine months is a long time, and I just want to make sure that if there's anything that, that is being held up by that, that we would talk about how to accelerate that timeline. But if there's no impact to taking nine months, then I suppose it doesn't particularly matter, and, and that's our understanding. There's nothing that our small businesses along that corridor would like to do that will be blocked on us going through this process, is there?
So I don't believe so, but I think that as we're going to work on this in the next couple of months to be able to bring a, a resolution to an, of intent back to council, we'll try to identify if anything is being held up and identify that for the council.
Okay.
But I don't believe so. I believe, you know, we, what we have said is, uh, folks are going to be able to expand their outdoor sidewalk seating onto the sidewalk, um, they are working with Public Works on the sidewalk seating permit, so it, it all seems to be moving.
Yeah, okay, good. I'm glad to hear that the temporary solution will enable us to more or less move in that direction. Another reason I think that matters is that I think it's likely to be a very long time until we have ten million dollars to invest in this. Uh, would love to have it laying around, but, um, doesn't seem like, that seems like something we will have to do incrementally over time. And I guess I'd like to understand to what extent you feel we can facilitate the investment of the business owners to the extent that they want to run ahead of us and propose creative solutions, and, and this was sort of reflected in our memo, trying to pull down private dollars to maybe, uh, you know, for example, paint the street to look different, or put in new lighting fixtures. Are these all, are these the kinds that are, or put decking on the sidewalk now that that's no longer going to be pedestrian, for, primarily for pedestrians, but for seating? Are these things we feel we can facilitate now in the short run?
We will be reviewing all of the, uh, intricacies as it goes along. Things like painting the street doesn't seem to be overwhelmingly challenging, changing out streetlights in terms of what they're intending to do and what kind of light throw they have and what impacts they have to city facilities and DOT's ability to maintain them and access them. Um, the decking on the sidewalk is something we're going to evaluate. I understand there's an application in on it, it doesn't comply with our current, um, standards, but are there things that we can do to think creatively and, and adapt?
Yeah, okay, thank you, Matt. And I, I would just suggest that when it comes to something like sidewalk standards, given that this is a very different street, I think our intention here is to maximize the public use of the space, I would suggest that we think about, and maybe you could even suggest to council, modifications of that, because the way that we treat every other sidewalk in the city might be different from one where we're intending to use the pedestrian mall act to intentionally create highly walkable space, where the sidewalk's primarily for seating and other public activity.
Understood, and the things we contemplate are what things are under the sidewalk, which is not nothing. And so what are those impacts and availability, and if those things are blocked off by something, how do we proceed? And so those things we need to evaluate. We have history in evaluating these kinds of things, and so.
Great.
We'll, we'll review.
I'm glad, I'm glad to hear you're, you're thinking through that, and that our intention is to be as flexible as we can be. And then last question for me is, do, do we have at this point a standing recurring meeting or some other vehicle through which we can work with all of the property owners on an ongoing basis as we're exploring what we want to do, hearing from them? I mean, do we have some kind of working group pulled together? I know, uh, Councilor Torres and I have both met with and convened the property owners. You all have had a series of meetings, but what's the forward-looking plan for coordinating with, and just having that tight communication loop with all the property owners?
Yeah, we're very familiar with all the business and property owners along the street, so I feel like very comfortable in the sense that we can pull them together, have good conversation, um, and we'll be able to kind of move this along at, at a good clip. So we've got mechanisms through our downtown association, we have, we're in email communication, we're in phone communication, um, we're on the street, we're texting, so I know we're going to be able to set up the meetings that we need to set up in order to be able to get the, um, the feedback and progress, and make the progress that we need to make.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that. I just, I guess what I'm looking for is I'd like us to proactively on a recurring basis be communicating status updates and what we're doing. I, I have heard, and I know if Councilor Torres was here, he would second this, um, a fair bit of frustration from some of the business owners and property owners about uncertainty and communication. I know it's a very complex issue, we got a big city to manage, so I'm not, I'm not blaming anyone here, but I just, I think it's important that we are on a, whatever's appropriate, monthly basis, every six weeks, checking in on, with them, and, because they're understandably very worried about this change, many of the businesses there. And so I just want to make sure we're being really proactive.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor May, I had one other thing. Um, it, we have to get through SEQA. I don't know where staff is, um, with SEQA, but that also is a, um, consideration on the timing.
Okay, okay, great. And the update on IGR, by the way, is that at least Senator Weiner's entertainment district bill passed out of Committee 70, so that's promising. Okay, I don't see any other hands, so I think we're ready to vote.
Still waiting on Councilmember. The vote was unanimous?
All right. Great. Thank you, staff. Appreciate all the work on this. I know it's been a long and winding road. We're on to item eight point three, which is an amendment to the annual action plan for reallocating a portion of our CDBG funding. And we have a short staff presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh, my name's Kristin Clements. I'm the interim deputy director for the Department of Housing, and with me is Emily Hislop, who oversees our rent stabilization programs and our eviction protection work. The action before you today is to redirect unused special community development block grant funds that we received through the Federal CARES Act to help us deal, our community deal with the impacts of COVID-19. These funds are also referred to as CDBG CV for coronavirus. Staff requests to redirect funding from the awarded activity, legal services, as they have a low likelihood of being spent in the near future. The contract owed the city and the law foundation ends on June thirtieth, and the law foundation unfortunately had a slower rate of spending because this contract is additive to the core contracts they already have with the city on fair housing and advising renters and owners on those cities' rent stabilization ordinances. This contract added to their workload, and like many nonprofits in our market, they have experienced staff turnover at the same time their, their workload is very high. So staff often ask to amend existing, uh, annual action plans to redirect funds, so they are all used promptly. The reason this amendment is to the nineteen twenty annual action plan is that the, that is the plan in which we first recognize CARES Act dollars in our annual action plan. And we thought, think this is a good opportunity to add funds to the eviction diversion and, uh, program, because the program is helping landlords and tenants settle active eviction lawsuits, where the tenant can pay rent going forward, but just needs a one-time assistance to be able to afford back rent that is owed. As you may know, there remains a significant need for emergency rent payments and this kind of assistance. Staff has seen recent increases in unlawful detainer filings submitted, and in March twenty twenty-three, a hundred and seventy-one unlawful detainers were filed that we knew of. That's a hun, two hundred and twenty percent increase over the seventy-seven unlawful detainers or eviction filings that were filed in July twenty twenty-two, uh, right after eviction protections were lifted. And also noting that most evictions occur because people cannot afford the rent, ninety-two percent of the filings from March were for non-payment of rent. Next slide. So this is simply depicting what the change to the annual action plan would be. The spending would be in the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, even though we're changing the nineteen twenty annual action plan. Um, Sacred Heart Community Service and the city together discussed what the needs were in the community, and both of us agree that we should prioritize financial assistance for households on the brink of eviction. This is an eligible use of the CARES Act funds, and we estimate that these dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand, could, as, could assist up to twenty-five households to avoid eviction through the one-time payment of back rent. And again, we're still spending down our, uh, CDBG CV dollars. All the uses need to be related to the COVID emergency. Next slide. Now I'll turn it to Emily, just to go through, give a little bit more context and background as to what eviction diversion efforts have looked like to date.
Good afternoon, council. To, to give more context about our division, our eviction diversion program, this slide shows data from the program's funding and households served to date. And the quickly, sorry, the city quickly developed the eviction diversion program in spring of twenty twenty-two to mitigate impacts from the closure of the state's rent relief program in March twenty twenty-two, which put thousands of renters at risk of eviction. The program directly helps tenants who are already in eviction court and about to be displaced. In this program, department staff works closely with court mediators, landlord attorneys, and tenant attorneys, including the law foundation, to provide a one-time rental assistance payment on behalf of tenants who are continuing to experience lingering financial impacts from the COVID-19 pandemic and are already in eviction court. Tenants must be able to pay the rent going forward. The divic, the diversion program makes payment directly to the landlord who has agreed to settle the action and allow the tenant to remain in the unit. Sacred Heart performs final review, approval, and issues the payment in addition to preparing required reports. Um, in implementing the first phase of the program, the city was able to leverage unused federal emergency rental assistance round one funds that had to be spent by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. There was, of that one point one five five million, there's a tiny portion that was, uh, more flexible funding left over from when we had the local program with the city and nonprofit partners. Um, so with these funds, we, we were able to assist sixty-five households and their landlords, uh, before spending deadlines. Um, as there continued to be need and there was other funding identified, we launched a phase two of the eviction diversion program where council authorized the use of American Rescue Plan Act Fund and Major E funds, and that phase of the program has assisted a hundred and thirteen households, families so far, and we have at least thirteen more in process. The total paid out in these two phases, uh, so far is about three point one million, and we still have about three hundred twenty thousand dollars remaining for the thirteen that are pending and possibly eighteen more, uh, cases. So the last row in italics, this is the proposed additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funding from CARES Act, and it would be expected, as Kristin said, to assist twenty-five low-income households and families, avoid eviction, and remain stably housed. Um, right now, our, the iteration of our program, we cap the assistant amount at ten thousand dollars per household, um, and which we can use to pay back rent of up to six months. And passing it back to Kristin, thanks. Oh, I can do that one, too.
No, I'm just saying, click.
Oh, click the slide.
We thought that the Sacred Heart eviction diversion work was, um, a judicious choice, but also an efficient one. Um, Sacred Heart has been the lead agency in administering the city's rental assistance payments since April twenty twenty-one, and their existing contract will be amended to add the two hundred and fifty thousand if this is approved, um, so the additional funds can get deployed without any delays. To give Sacred Heart a little bit more time to get the efficient, the, um, to administer these additional funds, uh, we'll extend the contract by four months through October thirty-first of this year. And again, we, um, we expect the assistance will be able to enable tenants to avoid imminent evictions, um, prioritizing those with extremely low incomes, so that they have some resources to settle the disputes with their property owners. Um, for reference, extremely low income in twenty twenty-two, in our county, a family of four earning up to fifty thousand, five fifty, um, could qualify. So with that, uh, the actions before you today are first to hold a public hearing, and then to adopt a resolution that approves the amendments, um, to the plan and to the contracts. So, back to you, Mayor, thank you.
Great, thank you. I appreciate the proposed amendment, and as part of our public hearing here, let's hear from the public.
Paul Soto?
Uh, Paul Soto with the horseshoe, from the horseshoe, I would ask that, uh, some kind of, uh, analysis be done on where this allocation can be increased forthwith? It needs to be funded with at least a million dollars, um, and consistently funded, not just with this ARP fund or nothing like that, but go back in your budget, you know, go, go, go and dig there. You're going to talk about nine million dollars going to build up San Pedro Square, and then the next budget item, you're going to talk about evictions? And, and how many people are suffering in this city, uh, from the impacts of COVID? But yet you bragged about how somebody was able to capitalize on COVID. And in your mind, do you really think that you're still human? You really think that you are still, oh, I'm this moral and ethical paragon, and, and I always exercise moral authority from this dice? You're a joke, Mayor, that's what you are. You're a joke. You're embarrassing. It's embarrassing to be able to say that I'm from San Jose.
Paul, your comments need to be to the entire council, not directed towards one person.
And have Mayor Mayhan as my mayor. This is embarrassing.
Blair Beekman?
Hi, Blair Beekman. Paul's embarrassed by the entire process. Uh, I, I can be in agreement sometimes. Uh, good luck how we work to, uh, bring in all the disparate parts of ourselves into kind of a healing center and whole, as how we can work as government and community. That is the goal of- is the goal of what we try to do. Good luck in our efforts to do that. Thanks also for Paul's words about the concepts of how to address funding issues, that we can, we should be more open in how we talk about how funding issues can be of help and understanding and not be afraid to use, share those numbers. It's important because we end up hurting ourselves when we're not more honest with each other in this sort of reporting at this time. So good luck in that. The more open we are, we just have a smarter community. People are smarter and more intelligent, and we have more better conversations with each other. It's my hope that, you know, HUD funding has been like, you talked about HUD funding overall very nicely over the years, and it's very, very much of a thanks that in how you talk about HUD funding, you do offer its many ideas and programs. It's just a matter for ourselves to know, want to know, and to know how to more openly talk about what's available within that. And good luck how we can do that. And to conclude, you know, it was mentioned yesterday that earthquake retrofitting may work to displace tenants, and I would be very surprised by that because earthquake retrofitting was so important in the past decade to get understood by owners that it can be a safe, good process for them. I don't think they want to leave tenants behind. Good luck how we have open practices to always serve the tenants in earthquake retrofitting times. Thanks.
Back to the council.
Great, thank you. Let's go to Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I know this is critically important, and it's always better to be able to work on the prevention side before you have to worry about, you know, getting, getting worse. You know, I was thinking about how we, how we take a look at this, and since Sacred Heart has been doing this for the last two years, I'm sure there are a lot of really good lessons learned. And I don't know at what stage people interact with Sacred Heart, whether it's, whether they're off the cliff or getting to the cliff or, or what have you. It seems to me that, you know, when I think about, and I know it's only estimated 25 at, you know, $10,000 apiece. It's, it's, to me, that means it's, you know, at least two months or more that people are in arrears. So I just, I just wonder, as we look into the future and trying to put funding into prevention, you know, what are some of the things that we could do earlier on so that, you know, people don't fall off the cliff? Because if we're trying to catch them at the end, sometimes they've gone several months, you know, in arrears. So I'm just wondering, since they've been doing it for the last two years, you know, I don't know what kind of lessons learned there are, but I would encourage, you know, taking a look at that. And maybe you already are, I just don't know. I'm sure you are. But I thought I'd bring it up because as I see, you know, the dollars diminishing, then we need to be smarter with what we have. And being smarter means that you kind of take people even earlier, right? If they're looking in that direction where there's going to be a problem, somebody got laid off, somebody, you know, can't make payments. So I just, I just look at prevention over a broader scale, and I'm hoping that you do, too.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. Our intention is to do both this last-minute assistance, but also really intervene quite a bit earlier. And so we have a number of initiatives under Emily that may be able to help earlier. Thank you for that thought.
Just to make it clear that there is the homelessness prevention system. That's a county-city nonprofit partner. That is separate from this, and it's been oversubscribed for quite a while since the, you know, during the same timeframe. So really, this stopgap is trying to deal with that. Basically, one person comes out of that system and another person goes in. So our first line of defense when people come to us is, okay, where are you at? Let's see if, you know, let's connect you to Sacred Heart and the other partners to see if you might qualify or if there's a spot for, in the homelessness prevention system, which is a more comprehensive holistic. This is very specific because we saw so many people that were just still trying to catch up, and they just, the landlords were kind of at their wits' end, and, you know, tenants had the ability to pay rent going forward, but they didn't want to pay rent if they knew they were going to be kicked out for the other. So this is just kind of taking care of that one small portion, and it's not ideal, but it's really just to keep the people who can pay rent, to try to give them one last chance because they don't quite qualify or there's no space in the homelessness prevention system.
So are you also working with landlords?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great.
Great. Thanks, Vice Mayor. All right, I don't see any other hands. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Great. Let's vote.
Vote was unanimous?
Great. Thank you. Okay, we're on to open forum, which is an opportunity for any member of the public to speak on any city business that was not on today's agenda.
We have some speaker cards. If you're still here, please make your way to the podium. Ha True, Nate Rogers, and Guru Srinath, if you're still here. Ha, Nate, and Guru. Okay, going to virtual speakers. Paul.
Thank you, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. Thank you for an excellent eye-opening meeting. The comments that were made by a certain member of District 7 did not go unnoticed. They did not go unnoticed. I'm going to record that, and I'm going to send it off to every single news outlet and every single person in my network that I work with to make certain that they heard that comment and know exactly what you guys, I've been right the whole time. You know I've been right. I've been posing legal arguments with it, and you know that they're valid. You know it for a fact. That right there, that comment that was made is my vindication, and I'm going to find it. I am going to get it to where the city attorney and the mayor is going to sit there and say, this man took us on and he, I already defeated Licardo and McHenry by taking that statue. So what? Don't test me. I'm a Chicano. I'm a son of the Chicano movement. I'm the nephew of the lowrider movement, and I am the grandson of the farmworkers movement. Paul Soto from the horseshoe out.
Blair.
Hi, Blair Beekman. Thanks for the meeting today. I hope the purpose of Mayor Mahan's current short-term housing development proposals at this time for FY24 budget choices are not absolutes, but meant as creative beginning ideas and steps that can be better developed with good-minded community input. As a part of many interesting public comments at a recent city council meeting on budget issues, Bob Bernstein of Working Partnerships offered, we can simply continue with already specified allotted amounts scheduled for Measure E, permanent affordable housing funding and practices in FY24. And from this, there should be a fairly good amount of additional funding that can still be available for more temporary housing development ideas and needs as well. This actually seems a safe, conservative, well-structured, well-established, and more efficient streamlined way to address the unhoused and budget issue. It is cost-saving, and it helps better develop safer steps, patterns, and goals to address unhoused issues that Mayor Mahan has initially tried to bring into better focus for all of us at this time. In what will be, and what has also been a decades-long problem spoken about by Housing Director Jackie Morales-Brand, is that learning to budget and employ a much larger city housing staff can better track and follow the hopes and needs of the unhoused from beginning to end. I hope Mayor Mahan's current one-year plans to rearrange already well-established bond measures will, I'm fearing that because of that, it will ignore and distract from developing good new long-term housing practices and funding patterns at this time. And that is a part of overall plans to try to force more market-rate housing ideas onto San Jose. We simply have well-established, good plant, patterns, and practices I hope we want to work towards at this time. Let's try to do that. Thanks.
Back to the council.
Great. Thank you all so much. We are adjourned.